Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the regular November meeting of the Concord Zoning Board of Adjustment. We will follow our usual procedure this evening, which is to say we will take the cases in the order in which they appear on the agenda, and we will ask the appellant's to come forward, be sworn in, and offer us whatever information they would like us to hear. We ask that, if at all possible, they can find their testimony to a 10-minute interval. We will then ask the appellant's to step down, and we'll solicit testimony from anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in favor or in opposition to the appeal, and we ask that those people please confine themselves, if at all possible, to a five-minute interval. We have a lot on our plate tonight, so we'll be very much appreciative if you keep it brief and keep it on topic. After the testimony portion, we will go over to code enforcement to find out if there are any recommendations or further information from code enforcement, and then if any information has arisen that appears to bear factual clarification, the appellant will have the opportunity to offer that clarification and not new arguments prior to our closing the public testimony portion of the hearing. In most cases, the board will act on each case before moving on to the next. The first case this evening is actually a rehearing, but a rehearing is treated as a new hearing in this case. It's case 4622-135 North State Street, RN Neighborhood Residential District by 135 N S S LLC owner. The applicant seeks to review -- seeks review of administrator's decision regarding the current uses of 135 North State Street in comparison to the permitted uses and current zoning relief for the property. Variants were granted for the principal use of F1 and three to four live-work units. During a recent review of the property and website, it was determined that the carriage house is being used in a different classification than general professional business and was classified as commercial indoor recreational facility use C3. Do you swear or tell the truth?
I do.
Would you please identify yourselves for the record?
My name is Kelly Ovitt Puck. I'm an attorney with the firm of Soloway &amp; Hollis, and I represent the applicant. I will introduce myself.
And my name is Greg Potter. I'm the managing member of 135 North State Street LLC. I apologize.
All right. What would you like us to know?
If I may, I would like to refer to some slides that are preloaded here.
Sure.
And if you don't mind, I'm going to go rather rapidly through the first set because some of them you've seen earlier. We understand the record includes the testimony in prior hearings, so I don't want to dwell on those, but get a little bit of new information, and then Kelly will update things. So we can move on. Oh, is that right? Thank you. Wow. I'm impressed. So, as a reminder, this property has a long, historic situation which predates as to every piece of improvement owned by KV Realty predates the zoning ordinance. The building at 125 North State Street, the 135 North State Street Carriage House and Mansion, which were used for over 40 years by St. Peter's Parish, and then starting, you recall the -- there were some changes as some of the parishes were consolidated, and this one unfortunately was one that was removed from active service. And so this board became actively involved around 2018 and heard, and thank you, and thank you for your patience. I know you've had more than 10 hearings on this. The planning boards had just about as many. We've been through all sorts of reviews and lots of administrative reviews, as you know, with a project like this. It's a fairly substantial project. It involves two parcels of land. The 125 North State Street property, which is what we own, it's been around, it's the actually oldest building on that block, and it was converted to an office building, as shown in the timeline, I believe, more than 30 years ago, and then the property, which was the Rollins, Governor Rollins' mansion at the corner of North State and 135, which subsequently was acquired by the Bishop of Manchester and operated as St. Peter's Parish for a very long time. As this project unfolded, there were two competing proposals before the bishop, ours, which was to cause consolidate everything into a community building in the middle and then office buildings on each corner, and that of John Shorelian, which ultimately survived but in a much different form, which is the plan shown on the right. I wanted to draw attention to the fact that when initially before you in 2018, the thought was that the carriage house would be integrated with the Rollins Court community, and the community room would be used by members of Rollins Court. That went back and forth over time. John found that development of the mansion and the carriage house was cost prohibitive. I wasn't quite as smart as he was, so I bought the money pit, and then $5 million later, we have the beautiful property that's there now, but we are way over-invested and way above the market value of the property. We knew that coming in, which is why we're so cautious to come back to confirm that the zoning relief was in place. Because the first hearings were conducted primarily by John, and he gave intention as to how the mansion might be used and what his plans were, but you'll see the final Rollins Court is not like this at all. There are not 10 units, there are eight. There is a driveway between 135 and Rollins Court, and Rollins Court, the lot line was revised so that John sold me the even larger money pit, which is the carriage house. There was extensive development. So, for example, the green rectangle in the lower left-hand corner is land that we granted an easement to Rollins Court so they could have their community gardens there. That's land on 125 North State Street. And the pink area reflects below ground massive infrastructure. There's an entire drainage and stormwater control system designed around the expansion of 125 and the needs of this neighborhood, which have eight residences with basements. And those of you who were part of St. Peter's Parish may recall that the basement at St. Peter's regularly was filled with water. They had some pumps there. They managed it well, but the groundwater was frighteningly high, particularly during storms. So John and I together financed this massive, I'm sorry, massive below, I thought somebody asked me to stop. So the pink area is there, and then that green area reflects the shared access, which is one way out. It comes in from Church Street and goes one way out. That was granted as a variance to allow that to be less than the required 24 feet, but the requirement was that we manage the traffic flow together and that be one way. We did not enforce the one-way vis-à-vis our neighbors at Rollins Court, but that was the planning board requirement, and the driveway is not wide enough for two-way. And then the other easement, green, to the left in the top, is a utilities access easement, and John and I decided to invest in going underground utilities on this, even though the original site plans didn't call for that, in light of the historic preservation and other work underway. So this is what happened, and you see the progress, 2010, 2019, and then a picture of things as it ended up in 2021. A major change. When this board heard it back in 2018, there was general community support, concerns about parking, excuse me. This board shared the concerns about parking, but your record makes it clear you had considered that and considered the competing impact of having to tear up the grass on the Rollins Mansion and determine that a compromise there was reasonable in light of all the circumstances. So here's the timeline of development. It's in your packet. I don't think I need to take your time for that to say there were a number of hearings. We're here because the Rollins Court neighbors, who are new to the community and were not there during the permitting process, sought to limit the surrounding properties, including the completion of work that had been part of the package from the beginning. They imagined future problems, and they have an incomplete or had an incomplete understanding of the permitting history. I think much of that's been remedied by these procedures, so thank you. But there's noticeably absent any convention center, which was the original presenting complaint, that we were building a convention center. We're not, have no intention of doing that. Any complaints about actual uses, there's no actual parking problems, there's no actual noise or other problems, and the actual facts concerning imagined future problems, I documented some of those in an earlier presentation, so don't want to take your time again. In contrast, over 10 community members with the budding residents have filed support letters for this appeal. It's in the record. And I just would note, there was a comment the last time, well, what would the neighbors have thought if they knew that this was going to happen? Well, two things. One is they did know it was going to happen, and we don't have to speculate. All of the neighbors who were there at the time, remember, the Rollins Court neighbors were not there at the time, but all the neighbors who were there in 2018, 1920, who are still in neighborhood, have submitted letters of support. And there's another neighbor here today who wasn't able to be with you before, who's been there from the very beginning and can testify to the actual facts. Two long-term residents confirm that the non-conforming uses have been dramatically reduced. That's documented before you. Two seasoned real estate professionals confirm the positive impact on neighborhood residential values. And in my personal case, because of the added cost burdens imposed by all the delays this year, I had to sell the unit, my wife and I had to sell Unit 2, which we owned in Rollins Court, in order to make up for some of our cash shortfalls for the development of the property, and the sale price was very materially above our purchase price just two years ago, more so than the general increase in purchase price. There's a very delightful couple coming who is well-suited for the neighborhood. That's a matter of public record. I'll give you more specifics if you want. I don't think it matters, but it confirms by an actual transaction closed two days ago that the property values have gone up dramatically since we have made our improvements. And then you heard the live testimony from Grace Faltoe and Alberto and others about how this property has had a positive impact on the community and its international residents, including a New Ukrainian family who just moved in across the street. So there have been no opposition letters filed, to our knowledge, and only two witnesses made comments in opposition. I spoke to one set of comments before. We can address the others if needed, but I don't believe there's any substantive negative actions in fact. Now, we had a red herring argument about racing simulators. They're not yoga mats. I acknowledge they're not yoga mats. I note a couple of things. The original design with the yoga mats had 20 yoga mats in the room. There are four racing simulators, so the actual number of people in that room have been reduced by this change, but I don't believe that is a difference in character. But moreover, as I'll show you, the racing simulators were before the zoning officials here, who ruled that they were consistent with the board's action. And the piece that was missing before, and I thank you, David, for pointing out this, no opportunity conferred with the actual zoning people who were here at the time. Since that time, we have been able to get the affidavit of Craig Walker, who graciously has given us this warm affidavit as to the facts of his understanding of what the zoning classification was, which is entirely consistent with what we're doing. We disclosed at every point along the way what we were doing. Things changed, that is true, and we disclosed the changes as we went over the 10-plus hearings. And we met, in addition to formal board meetings, with the individuals charged with code enforcement, naming, namely, the code enforcement manager for the city of Concord. And we explicitly confirmed that all necessary relief was in place for the actual final plans prior to convincing the carriage house preservation. Why? I said the mansion was a money pit. It was a money pit because it's very expensive, as many of you know, and I didn't take something that's 100 years old and preserve every inch of it, which we did. That's the mansion. When we came to the carriage house, we quickly discovered it was in a state of structural collapse, which meant we could have torn down that building and rebuilt it for roughly half the cost of what it cost to do what we did. But we agreed, after reviewing this with the city council, who unanimously approved the project, and I don't mean zoning approval, they reviewed it in connection with tax relief, but they applauded the proposal, and we agreed to preserve the skin of the building. That meant we had to build a complete new steel infrastructure and reallocate the spaces so that the large meeting room was on the first floor and not the second floor. We did all that, but would not have been done without our understanding that everything we were putting in that building was consistent with the zoning release that we'd been given. So here are some specific examples of this. We gave you some of those before. Here's the actual plan with the racing simulators in it. That was before the zoning board, before the zoning administration, before the manner went to the city council, and you'll see Matt Walsh's notes about that. And he reports in his note that the intention, which had been the intention since at least 2019, that there would be public rentals of these spaces, and that was part of the program, well-known to everybody in zoning now for three years before we started. And then what was missing before you before is the actual information from the code administrator, who made up the classification, live slash work, which is, of course, not in the zoning code. So we suggest that we're entitled to rely on what he told us, that this was a classification which covered what you need, and he addressed some of the specific concerns. So in fairness to the people who are here, you didn't have this, this is new, and we're grateful that Craig was kind enough to supply that for the record. So as to parking, this board noted there was a compromise as to parking, but here's the actual facts. We have done several years of multi-month studies. Every one of them shows less than 50% utilization of the existing parking lots. And here's the facts of this afternoon. You can see our 125 North State Street parking lot. It's roughly half-full. That's a typical day for us. And then on the right is Franklin Street, and you see ample on-street parking on both sides of the street and literally nobody there. That's a typical day in the neighborhood. Let's go to the mansion. Here's Church Street. There is, I believe, one car up there, about halfway up the block, but as, and on the right you see the State Street side of Church Street, which has parkings on both sides of the road. As you'll see, the only occupants of those parking spaces are leaves there for the fall cleanup. There is no parking problem. When we have events, we manage so that there is no parking problem there. We have three fellows who are here. They can explain some of that if you want, but we, I think you heard a little bit about that, and we don't want to take your time unnecessarily on that. But we can root folks over to 125, and as it turns out, we have never had a parking problem in all the work. So in summary, we've maintained complete transparency from the beginning. It was contemplated as spaces would serve users on the 135 North State Street lot and the 125 North State Street lot. No zoning category existed to cover these uses. So there was a live-work class created by the zoning department and approved by this board, and affirmed later as supporting all the intended uses as this project progressed and successive filings were made because of the structural conditions encountered. This explicitly included, as you see in the documentation, outside rentals and all the uses, gathering room, kitchen, large meeting room, golfing simulators, and racing simulators. All that was affirmed prior to the time we started renovation on the carriage house. Now we spend over $5 million, and I think everybody agrees this is a fabulous success, and it's a win for the community. We followed all the guidance, took all the steps recommended. We believe our interpretation of this new category should be given weight. It is consistent with the plain meaning of the words, which is a guidance given by the zoning ordinance itself. We've given you the definitions in some of the pleading materials, and it's what the zoning committee own personnel have interpreted to mean. We believe also our continued use of the grandfathered non-conforming uses has been substantially reduced in scope. You recall that Bill Norton of Norton Asset Management managed all the disposition of the Roman Catholic properties, and he was meticulous about preserving the uses to the day of sale and the tax exemption and so on. We did hit all the buttons that this committee considered. It's now taxable, it's less a burden on the public, and it contributes to the overall community. And we just suggest it would be manifestly unjust now to require compliance after we've done all this to a different category that itself doesn't apply either. So thanks for your time, and I appreciate your hearing this additional information.
Thank you. For the record, to the extent I can, we can, we'd like to incorporate what was submitted in the testimony at the prior hearings so that we don't have to repeat that, although we, I do note, we have a couple of new board members who weren't at the prior hearing, so I think it may have been beneficial for Fred to have given his presentation. I will try and be brief. I do, I did not do a PowerPoint this time. Fred did the PowerPoint, but I did prepare a brief, you have one of these, Fred?
I do.
A brief outline of the chronology and some key points, background points here, to make it easier for all of you to follow along with me. As you all know, 135 North State Street is in the RN district, the residential neighborhood district. It's approximately half an acre. This district, in this district, largely residential uses are permitted, including the conversion of residential buildings of up to five units. This is because in this district, there's a lot of large historical buildings that no longer have use as big, single-family homes, but the zoning ordinance and the planning board has recognized that those can still be used residentially. Church and community center uses are permitted by special exception only. I will note that this particular property, as Fred mentioned, was grandfathered, and as far as I know, there was never a special exemption granted for the church use, which I think started like 1947. Office uses are not permitted. As to the prior historic use, Fred largely went over it. I'll just reiterate that the historic use had elements of residential church, office, and community center. It was a combination of uses, which we recognized, and we needed to be creative, and we came back and developed this property, and we sought to kind of continue but minimize that those non-conforming combination of uses. So here's the chronology of kind of the key, I've highlighted in this chronology, just really the key events and relief that was granted, so that it would be easier to follow along. Fred's gone over a lot of it, so I'm just going to really quickly hit it. You see June 13, 2018. At this point, it was still John Shorelian kind of leading the pursuit of the relief, but that's where we get the variance for the principal use of general office, F1, with a live-work residential use. So that's the principal use variance. Come back in September, this was after, some of you may recall, there was a recommendation by the Architectural Design Review Committee that the carriage house be moved over and be part of the Mance property, and that's where we get the variance for the accessory use in the carriage house, to permit the use of an existing building for community room, fitness rooms, garage storage, as accessory uses to the principal use in the Mance. So those are really the two key variances here. And as Fred alluded to, and I know most of you are aware, this project did change over time. There were things discovered, there were plans changed. At one point, you know, the, they got into the carriage house, they realized it wasn't structurally as sound as they had hoped, and they had to choose between changing the design for the internal of the carriage house and really just tearing down the building. And everybody really wanted to preserve this historic building. You know, each time that we had changes, as Fred alluded, we went back to planning and zoning. There were constant communications with Craig Walker and said, here's our revised plans. Do we still comply? Do we need further zoning relief? And when we were told we needed further zoning relief, we went, we came back and we got it. So really, if we had been told that we needed further zoning relief for what was being contemplated, there's no question that Fred would have come back there's no question that Fred would have come back and sought that zoning relief. Sorry, I forget when I need the glasses and when I don't. June 2019, then we get planning board review. Prior to Fred actually signing the PNS with John Chorleyan to purchase the lot, I reached out to Sam Durfee, who was the senior planner at the time, confirmed the zoning relief. I think that letter's in the record. I'm happy to provide it if it didn't end up making it into the record. And then September, I'm having ongoing discussions with Craig Walker and Sam Durfee to, again, reiterate that the zoning relief is still, is still in place. I'm sorry, the June 2019 was an email with Sam Durfee, the September 2019 was the letter. And then Fred is having also communications with the city, and he's having communications with Craig and Matt Walsh about historic preservation of the property and whether it qualifies under the historic preservation tax benefits. And you can see there, there was a report that was submitted to city council that references the intent to have some limited use by the public, limited rentals. February 2020, that's when Fred sends Craig, Heather Schenk, who's the senior who's planning, and Matt Walsh, which showing the racings. Now we've gone from the yoga mats to the racing simulators and the larger community room. That was in connection with pulling out those parking spaces due to the structural issues with the Carriage House. Fred does come back because we've talked to Craig Walker, and he said, hey, you do need some variances for this, they relate to the parking. We come back and we get those variances at that point in time. I think it was Peter Imsey who came and presented to you, my colleague. And then Fred goes ahead, he proceeds with his, you know, very, very expensive acquisition, renovation, historic preservation efforts. And then he opens for business, and we get a determination letter in June of this year. And after David had had the opportunity to come by, interview and visit, we get the determination letter that some of the uses in the Carriage House are not in compliance. And in particular, and I'm sure that David will correct me if I mischaracterize anything, but the letter should also be in the record. But as I see it, in a nutshell, it's that the use of the Carriage House should be reclassified as commercial indoor recreation facility due to the golf simulators and the racing simulators, that there's the one residential unit that Fred has rented out to a non-employee of the building, doesn't comply with the live-work classification. That was a unit that would otherwise have been vacant, and that additional variances are needed for the conversion of the non-residential building to one or more dwelling units and for the parking because recalculations are warranted, given the C3 use and what he characterizes the public assembly use. So Fred mentioned that he spent over $5 million, and we, this is the exact figure here, so it's about $570,000 of acquisition costs, and then the balance of it is largely renovation and historic preservation of almost $4 million. So this is a very significant investment, and this investment was made in reliance on what Fred believed and understood because, as a result of his communications with city officials, that he could do at this property. The actual use of the Carriage House, so Fred talked a lot about how, you know, the renovations had improved, the values in the neighborhood, the aesthetics in the neighborhood, and that there were no complaints. All of that is true, but I'm sure that this board is very interested in as well what is going on at the property. So the Mance property, which I don't believe is an issue other than the live-work unit, is being rented to a long-term tenant and a business tenant, and it's also being used by Fred's business legacy wise. There are legacy wise fellows in, how many of the units, Fred?
Three.
Of the residential units? Three of the residential units. And one, the one residential unit that would otherwise be vacant has been rented out, I think through next summer. The Carriage House, which now has these racing simulator and golf simulator rooms, a community meeting space, some ancillary kitchen facilities, is being used by the long-term business and residential tenants of the, what we call the Governor's Center, which is this kind of collective spaces on an unlimited basis. That's part of their arrangement. That's a use that was very clear and always contemplated, and I don't believe that use is in question. When it's not used by the actual tenants of the spaces of the Governor's Center, which to be clear includes both 135 and 125, then the other uses are non-tenant members of the Governor's Center. So Fred has a program where you can actually purchase a membership, or a business can purchase a membership in the Governor's Center, and which entitles them to use these spaces that are available. And then nonprofits on a limited reservation-only basis for no fee. And Fred has asked me to clarify that while to date, he has let nonprofits who have requested use the meeting spaces for no charge. He doesn't want to make a representation that he would never charge a nonprofit ever. So I'll just clarify that. And then businesses, members of the public on a limited reservation basis on a, for very short periods of time on a fee basis, and that has really been de minimis. I think we included numbers in our original application, but I think it's been like four rentals outside of those above. So the large majority of the use are really the business and residential tenants, and then the members of the Governor's Center and the nonprofits. So all that being said, that's, that's the history, and I think the key points there. So to turn to our argument, the 2018 zoning relief for the Carriage House granted was for the use of an existing building for a community room, fitness room, and garage storage as accessory uses to an office and live-work use. The 2022 administrative determination was that the use of the Carriage House should be reclassified as commercial indoor recreational facility. Implicit in that determination is a determination that the use of the Carriage House was not an accessory use, but that it was a principal use in itself. A principal use is defined as the primary purpose for which a lot or structure is used. An accessory use, which is what the Carriage House was approved for, is defined as a use or structure on the same lot with and of nature incidental and subordinate to the principal use or structure. A commercial indoor recreational facility, I'll note, is not defined in the zoning ordinance. Specific examples are given of bowling alleys and billiard halls. These are both facilities that are generally open to the public, that may attract large groups of people, and are not on a limited reservation-only basis, are not typically used with a, with a principal use, and aren't generally used by nonprofits for no fee. So, sorry, I'm a little tickly in my throat. So I think the question, really the question here is, first, I just want to get the red herring argument out of the way, which is that, you know, when we were here originally, there were yoga mats shown, and now there's racing simulators. There was a lot of discussion about that at the initial hearing. Fred kind of made some comments about that. I will just also note that that is really immaterial. Those kind of recreational and fitness uses are kind of, are all in the same class under the zoning ordinance. Tennis and golf, actually, are sometimes characterized as recreation, sometimes as fitness, unless you want me to address that argument more, I'm going to let that go. So I think the question here is not, you know, are these types of facilities, meeting spaces and fitness or recreation amenities, are they, can they be accessory to a business use? I think that determination was already made. I think it was made correctly, that businesses, and in fact even landlords, because we do have some residential use here, it's common for them to provide those kind of amenities in, as accessory to their business use, for their, for their tenants, for their employees, for their residents. That's not uncommon. It's customary. I'm sure we all know lots of businesses that have conference rooms. We probably have less businesses because we're not like in, you know, the California tech industry, that have things like, you know, ping pong tables and pool tables and stuff like that, but I'm sure we've all heard of it and we're aware that that is out there and exists, and it's customary for very high-end businesses. So I don't think that is the question. I think the question really is, has this, is this use properly characterized at this point in time as a principal use or as an accessory use? And a couple of points on that. First, leasing a building or space out, either long-term or short-term, does not change the nature of the use. So, and as an example, as an analogy, I'm sure you're hearing probably a lot, if not here, in the news about short-term rentals. So, and so far, I'm not aware of anything in our zoning ordinance that says short-term rentals convert a residential use to non-residential. That may be coming, but right now, there's nothing. So this is similar. Business use, it's not, there's no requirement of owner occupancy, and there's no requirement for business use for long-term. So I don't think that alone can convert this use from an allowed principal use to an accessory, or an accessory to a principal use. Here, we have a model that kind of is forward-thinking, but is not unknown. What Fred is contemplating is this Governor's Center concept where he has a suite of amenities that are accessory for his businesses that are on-site, but that he also makes available for other businesses that don't have the resources, don't have the space for those amenities, those suites of amenities, and may want them on a very short-term occasional basis. We actually have a similar example right here in the city, this WeWork space that's new in Common Court, which rents out meeting spaces, offices, something called phone booths on a very short-term rental basis. I'm not aware that that's converted it from an office use to some other kind of use. Similarly, a use of historic properties or unique properties or unique amenities that opens it up for the public on an occasional basis or for special limited events is customary. So for an example, I'm going to point just to Kimball Jenkins right down the road, which also happens to be in the RN district, and as far as I know, has no zoning relief, but advertises for weddings and events and has facilities that are appropriate for that. Their principal use is something else, but in order to generate a little bit of additional income, probably to support the maintenance of an expensive historic building, they have these occasional other events. It's not unknown. It's not unknown here, it's not unknown other places. Similarly, it's common and customary for businesses to allow nonprofits to use their meeting and other amenity spaces largely on a no-fee basis. That's something that Fred's doing here. I'll reiterate, the vast majority of these uses, these uses are by the current tenants, by the Governor's Center members, which are akin to the WeWork kind of concept, and by the nonprofits. It's a very, very small percent, less than 5%, that are actually outside fee rental users. For very, on a reservation basis, this isn't open to the public like a billiard hall or a pool or a bowling alley. So really, our position is that the mansion remains the principal use of office, general office, and live-work, and the Carriage House remains an accessory use, that it was classified correctly in the first place, and that the current use is consistent with that classification. And we submitted Craig's, Craig Walker's affidavit, that was information that was new, that I appreciate the board didn't have, Mr. Hall didn't have, and you'll see that his affidavit reflects that he determined that the contemplated use of the fitness and community rooms were accessory to the principal uses, and that no further relief was needed other than the parking relief. We specifically came back once that change to the Carriage House had happened. Throughout this process, the contemplated uses have been transparent, have been disclosed. There have been numerous communications with Craig Walker, with Matt Walsh, with Sam Durfee, with Heather Schenk, all municipal officials who we relied on. And Fred proceeded with his business and renovation plans in reliance on those communications at huge expense. I also just want to briefly address the live-work. That was also addressed in Mr. Walker's affidavit, and I think it's clear from his affidavit that while the applicant's intent and the applicant's testimony at the hearing was that we did, we were, we believed that the legacy wise, the onsite tenant would be able to occupy the properties, that that was our intent, but Mr. Walker actually did not require that the employees be the ones who occupy the property. That was not what he contemplated, and in fact, when he, when he structured the parking requirement, he counted those spaces independently. He counted residential spaces independently from the office spaces. So it's our position on the live-work that it was a new use, that Mr. Walker's communications to us define that use, we relied on it, and that what was contemplated were multiple principal uses that were consistent with the historic uses of this property. The residential use notably was not classified as an accessory use to the principal office use. They were two, two different uses. This property was contemplated to be a multi-use property, just as it had been used in the past. Finally, I will note that conversion of a residential building to five or less units is a permitted use under our zoning ordinance. So here, we have a combination, we have a mixed use, so there was some uncertainty. We came before the zoning board, we communicated with Mr. Walker to make sure we could do this, but there is some support in the zoning ordinance for this type of use in this largely residential district. In conclusion, the use of the Carriage House remains accessory to the principal use of the Mance. Accordingly, it is our position that the Carriage House should not be reclassified as a principal use of commercial indoor recreational facility, that multiple independent principal uses of the Rollins Mance, namely, general office and live-work, were contemplated, and those uses are permitted under the zoning relief, and that no parking recalculation is warranted, given that this analysis was already conducted by the former zoning administrator. If the ZBA is inclined to deny the appeal, we request that it identify which of the uses exceed the scope of the prior zoning relief and otherwise permitted uses, and which of the uses are properly classified as C3. My client needs some guidance here, and I will note that the zoning ordinance does allow this board to deny or approve or modify the zoning administrator's decision, determination. So we are requesting that if you're inclined to deny our appeal, you give us some guidance, and we're not back here again. Thank you.
Would you go back briefly to, in your summary there, when you were asked, you were speaking about the accessory versus principal use in the Carriage House? Did I misunderstand you that, that you were arguing that the Carriage House is a principal use?
I'm arguing that implicit in the, in Mr. Hall's determination is the determination that the Carriage House is a principal use.
But you believe it to be an accessory use.
That's what it was approved for, and yes, that's what it's being used for.
I see. Okay. Other questions from the board?
Related question, I think this is pretty straightforward, but you can have more than one principal use on a lot, right?
Yes, that's permitted.
Yeah, my question's, if you can help me better understand the path in, in the punchline.
It's very convoluted, I know.
Well, not necessarily. I just need to be reminded of the steps that we've taken on the live-work matter. So it looks like back in June of 2018 is when you first approached us to ask for the live-work determination. What specifically were asking for? You're asking for, in what was granted in June of 18, was it a variance?
So it was a variance that was granted, yes. As I mentioned, at that point in time, John Chorleyan was kind of taking the lead, he was the one- He was the one who had the property under contract with the bishop, and he had hoped that he would sell just the mansion to Mr. Potter. And so, the plan at that time was that Mr. Potter would purchase the mansion, would hopefully move his business in, and those spaces would largely be occupied by his fellows of his business. His business model contemplates this fellowship program. So then, the carriage house was added at the request of, or at the suggestion of ADR over to be combined. There was going to be a different subdivision. So at that point, then, Mr. Potter contemplated taking both properties, and there was an agreement at that time, although not formal, but an understanding between Mr. Chorleyan and Mr. Potter, that the Rollins Court neighborhood contractually would be allowed to use that carriage house building that would have these, you know, community meeting space, fitness recreation facilities. That never came to fruition. I mean, that was part of the negotiations, but that contemplated use by other users was discussed at the ZBA hearing. The next hearing, I believe what happened, and this is what really gets confusing, is although negotiations had been ongoing between Mr. Potter and Mr. Chorleyan, they kind of had stalled, and so Mr. Chorleyan came back here and he came up with a new plan to convert the carriage house and the mans to additional residential units that would be part of the Rollins Court neighborhood. That was abandoned because then the negotiations between Mr. Chorleyan and Mr. Potter moved toward, so.
And on that point, just the live-work was never our imagination. It was brought to us by zoning, who said, "This is the category." And it wasn't that live-work goes together, it was that the building is a mixed-use building. There is residences there, and there are offices there, live/work. And that's what we understood it to mean.
So I guess, as I recall, I can go back and dig through the minutes, that the zoning board, and I think I sat on that, was concerned that it was going to be, that it would become a residential facility apartments, but we were corrected that, in fact, it wouldn't be that, that there was a strong connection to this live-work program and that everyone who lived there would also work for a business that was in the building. And I think that was the relief that was granted. What it looks like has happened now is that that's just not working out, and you're looking for the opportunity to just have purely residential units with not an association with the tenant working for one of the businesses in the building.
So largely due to COVID and the economy and what was going on, what has happened is the growth of the business that Fred is building has been slower than anticipated, so that he ended up with one residential unit that was just vacant. And somebody came to him and said, you know, "Can we rent this?" So that's really the hope and the intent, but we definitely don't want to be locked into this, and we don't want future owners to be locked into this, is that those, all of those residential units will be occupied by employees of the businesses that occupy those, the governor's center spaces. But things, you know, change and things happen, so we do need to get clarity on this. And Mr. Walker did come to us and propose this classification, and he required us to count the parking separately for that because he anticipated those may not be the same users.
And I guess what I'm struggling with is, I'm trying to understand what we meant when we said we would go along with live-work. It sounds like it's, well, live-work when we want to or we can find the right employees, but if not, then it's just live.
Well, I think it's different.
And why aren't you asking for the relief to allow for just residential units in the building?
I think Mr. Walker clarified in his affidavit, it is a live-building, i.e. residences, therefore, the building also has offices. It is a work-building, it is a live/work-building. It's not that there, an identification of everyone being the same, and that's what we understood from the beginning. Our desire is that we'll fill it, but we don't know.
Well, I guess I appreciate the fact that you weren't before the board asking for relief, it was Mr. Chorleyan.
Yeah.
But I think, and maybe someone, a city official has given you other, what I'm trying to better understand is how has the ZBA's relief that was granted in June of 18 changed? It doesn't, from the timeline that you presented to, it doesn't look like we've taken any action. There's just been some unique interpretation that we didn't mean it, or I didn't mean it, when we approved, granted the relief in 2018 that said, "Okay, fine, if the residents of this building also work in the building, we'll grant that relief." But I don't recall we were granted relief of, unless that doesn't work out, you just want to rent it out to non-employees.
There was no condition put on the decision that the ZBA issued. Mr. Walker was the one who came up with this classification, who we were communicating with about what it meant. And our hope all along, and most of our discussions probably were tailored along the legacy-wise fellows that are going to occupy this building. It might be helpful, Fred, if you just describe what the residential spaces are.
So there is a two-bunk unit on the lower level with a private bath. There is a two-bunk unit on the third floor with a private bath, and there is a third unit with a little sitting area and a bedroom and a loft area with a kitchenette. That's the one that's actually rented right now. The fellows occupy all the other buildings, and there is a flex room on the second floor, which, as it turns out, the New Hampshire Business Finance Authority needed for office space, and that was shown on the plans as flex. It could go either work or live, and that's now work. But that in the future, it won't be for a while, because the Business Finance Authority has a 10-year lease, but when they're done, it's conceivable that might go back to be a residential unit, in which case it would be a bedroom with a private bath.
So Fred, just to clarify, the only residential space that has its own kitchen facilities is the one that you have rented?
Correct. Everything else is a shared kitchen, it's part of the community life of the program. So these three people who are here are part of that program, and they occupy the three spaces that are still dedicated to the residences.
Okay, so, I appreciate that. So there's one unit that's rented to somebody that does not work in the building?
Correct.
And that's not classified, I shouldn't view that as live/work. Because the person doesn't work there. So it just strikes me as outside of the bounds of what was approved in 2018. And I'm not saying we couldn't find a way to resolve that, it just looks like we're struggling over slashes versus hyphens as to what we meant in 2018, in my expectation that all of the units would always be rented or occupied by employees.
I think that's fair. I don't know what you meant. That's why we went back for these interpretations each time, because...
Well, I guess the documentation from him, he said, you know, "I don't know what I meant either because, you know, it was separated by a slash and not a hyphen."
I'm not trying to be, I just don't...
All right, just to get to the point. So the relief you're asking for tonight is for us to be more inclusive in our interpretations of live-work, so that if there are situations where you're not able to find an employee to rent the unit, then you can rent it to a non-employee.
So we'd ask you to recognize the prior code administrator's interpretation and definition of that classification, which we understood we were complying with.
Okay. Nick, do you have any, I'm sorry, Jim?
No, I'm good.
Nick? Anyone else? We're all good. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in support of this appeal? Please come forward.
Hello.
Hello, you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Please have a seat and identify yourself for the record.
My name is Kim Brown, Kim Brown Hutton.
I believe you also submitted a memo?
I did.
What would you like us to know?
Well, I've been around for a long time.
Okay, you now know that.
My parents got married in St. Peters Church 62 years ago, and I have lived on the corner of North State and Church Street across the 135 since 1986. So I've seen a lot of changes that have happened, gone through the church. If you want to talk about parking impact, that was amazing, between winter months, when the city only plowed my side of the street and not the other, so all the cars parked I always get nervous speaking.
Take your time.
I will.
Not too much.
I won't. So, anyway, I've been through when it was the homeless shelter, which was always fun, and that was exciting. So when John Chorleyan came and asked whether I would be in favor of the small pocket community, I was very in favor of that. Was with the, when Benny wanted Walker School, he did a fabulous job. So I understand, you know, things change, and between John Chorleyan and Fred Potter, they came to an agreement that Fred would take over the mans and the carriage house. He has done a great job, and I'm very thankful that the preservation that has happened with that building. I have not seen any impact whatsoever that has been a negative to the community or my neighborhood. There is no parking issues. They have been very respectful, very kind, and I would say that to have a little bit of, for what he has done for this community, the neighborhood, if he gets a little revenue from renting out for public use, and I would be happy to rent someplace close for a birthday party, an anniversary party, whatever, it's not going to hurt to have a few cars parked on the street in my neighborhood, or my side of the street, or in front of my driveway, it's two cars. So I think you should go ahead and approve the appeal and let him use it. It benefits the community, the neighborhood.
Thank you, Ms. Brown Hutton. Are there any questions? Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Please come forward. Swear to tell the truth?
I do.
May we have your name, please?
Certainly. Chris Bolt, the UL DT of Donahue-Tucker-Chindela, and I am here on behalf of the Rollins Courts or most of the Rollins Court owners. I handed out a packet earlier, so in the interest of time, I will go as quickly as possible through it. One of the things that I want to stress is, the burden of proof is on the applicant to show that Mr. Hall's lettered decision is wrong, and it has to be based on things in the actual record. Folks' supposition, recollection, things of that nature, just as you indicated, Mr. Monahan. You know, what did we mean at the time? You look back at, A, what was applied for, and B, what was granted, to determine what is there. The, my clients are concerned because of what appears to be developmental creep. Things are approved for one thing, and then slightly morph, and then morph again, and more further. We're happy to hear that they don't want an event center, a convention center. That's great, because their website did say that. Weddings, events, things of that nature that bring a lot of people to this site. Keep in mind that this is a unique situation, but it's not the only church property that has been divested, taken down. One of the hats I wear is frequently the special counsel for the dices on real estate matters. I wasn't involved in this one, I have been involved in others. And so, I want us concerned, based on the representations in the appeal document, that they were saying, "Well, the carriage house has always been used for weddings, it's been used for events." I'm going, wait a second, that doesn't make sense. The church, St. Peters, was on the lot portion that now has the pocket neighborhood, the condos, my clients. The parish hall was also on that portion of the property. The mans, or the mansion, was the rectory, and the carriage house was just that. When it was the governor's mansion, it housed horses. When it was the rectory, it housed cars. At one point in time, around 2010, my sources indicate, the parish's food pantry moved into part of the lower level, moved their refrigerators there. So the food pantry operated out of the lower level, but the garage was still there. It was in decrepit shape, no doubt about it. One of the concerns we have from the appeal document is the implication of municipal estoppel, the arguments of, "We spent so much money." We had somebody tell us. As the Dembiac v. Hooksit case, which is the first tab I give you, clearly states, municipal estoppel's not within your jurisdiction. You don't decide a case based on municipal estoppel. What we have, instead of suppositions or recollections, or we think this was here and there and everywhere, I've given you the facts based on the documentation from about a foot of paper that I reviewed of the various files on this property. And on 125 North State Street, and on the Rollins Court development. What is key is things change. If you look at tab two, you see the decision that is dated September 7th of 2019. The 2019's a typo, it's 2018. And we know that from various other documents that we're going to want to look to here, the first line of which corrected it in the text, but didn't correct it up at the top. That says what is approved in case number 5418. And it talks about the use of the existing building for a community room, fitness rooms, and garage storage as accessory uses to an office and live-work use. And if you look at the application, this is by Mr. Chorleyan for 135 North State Street. At no point in time is it tied to 125 North State Street. Okay? And if you, tab three, is Mr. Chorleyan's narrative. Again, it's clear, it's 135 North State Street, the mansion lot, and talks about the intended uses of the carriage house. In interest of brevity, you look at the third paragraph on the, my apologies, I flipped too far. Third paragraph on that first page, it talks about the community room being a portion of the first floor, garage storage space on the first floor, and fitness rooms on the second floor. That's the plan that's presented to you in that case. It also gives background on the pocket neighborhood that is next door. Tab four is the notice of decision on case 2319. That's a May 6th notice of decision, again, that states what the relief was granting, maximum coverage of 63%, where 50% is allowed, and to allow a detached accessory structure, carriage house, to be converted for residential uses. The reason that's important is your ordinance required the buildings to be attached, and here, they are not, they are detached. Again, Mr. Chorleyan's narrative is at tab five. Looking at the top, it's proposed new redevelopment. The plan has now changed from 2018 to 2019, and you have a move away from a community room, which was tied to the pocket neighborhood. We'll see in the plans here that originally that was, the configuration of the mansion lot had... lot had the carriage house being part of the pocket neighborhood. So it was to be a community room for them, not for the public. And when we have this narrative of redevelopment, it goes into the, the third paragraph on the first page. You're gonna reconfigure the lots. So there are still gonna be two lots, but you're gonna carve off the carriage house from the pocket community and tie it to the mansion. Again, no reference to 125. The plan is to put two residential units in the mansion and two residential units in the carriage house. And that's it. So we know that's it because at tab six, we have a plan. And that plan shows not only the, the reconfigured pocket neighborhood, but which units are where in both the mansion and the garage, the carriage house. So you, and you have this list of what is the relief being sought on that plan. That is dated April 1st of 2019, coming from the applicant with his filing. And then at tab seven, you have a presentation of the applicant at that time. Those pages are clear. They give you a history of what the relief was. Second page lists the variances that were granted in June and September of 2018 and the lot configuration at the time, showing the configuration with the carriage house being part of the pocket neighborhood. The third page shows the new plan. We're going to keep the carriage house to the mansion, and this is the uses and these that are released, we're having. That is what you approved, looking back at it. It is important with those configurations to realize when a, when a applicant makes that presentation, it is binding on them. That is what you grant relief for. And that is the basis of my legal statement there is the 1808 Corporation case that I give you a copy of. And that's where somebody who made a representation to the ZBA getting relief, saying only X square feet of a building would be used as office space, the rest would be storage, could not come back in and say, I'm, I'm just expanding the office space, and I don't have to get any relief from you. So the court said, no, your, your representations, even when they're not in the notice of decision, are binding upon you. When, the last thing that I give you is a September of this year email from Sam Durfee that is talking about what was and was not discussed. Particularly weddings and the simulators were never part of the discussion. What I believe the situation calls for is for this board to deny the current appeal, affirm Mr. Hall's decision, and have the applicant come back for another variance, if that's what they're wanting to change, what they're previously been approved for. And what they've been previously last approved for is two residential units in the, in the carriage house and two residential units in the mansion. They want to change something, great, fine, and wonderful. You gotta come through and you gotta meet the five statutory criteria for a variance. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Could you, for a non-lawyer, or for the benefit of a non-lawyer, explain to me the thrust of the decision concerning municipal estoppel and how it relates to this?
Certainly. The Dembiac case dealt with a property owner who had gone, gotten relief from the code enforcement officer in Holderness to build a, a unit on the property where an existing unit already existed. After he builds it, the code enforcement officer says, I can't give you a code, a certificate of occupancy because you have two units and we only allow one. And the applicant brought suit against the town for, basically for municipal estoppel, and had to, had to argue the four prongs for municipal estoppel. The town at the time sought to have the case dismissed because he had not gone for an appeal of administrative decision to the ZBA for that municipal estoppel argument. The trial court agreed with the town. The Supreme Court reversed that and said most clearly, the statutes do not authorize the ZBA to have jurisdiction on the equitable issue of municipal estoppel. It's beyond your purview. You do not have jurisdiction. More importantly, it, it distinguished the Thomas v. Hooksit case, which is cited in Kelly's materials as the basis for municipal estoppel, by saying, we never really addressed municipal estoppel in that case. We never addressed the issue of jurisdiction. So it distinguishes out, and in my read, says Thomas v. Hooksit is no longer valid for municipal estoppel issue, and said the ZBA doesn't have jurisdiction. That's the gist.
So would that mean, simply put, that in the event that, because I, I noticed in that case, there was no variance involved, correct?
They were arguing that he should have come and gotten a variance.
Right, but he hadn't been granted any relief.
Correct. He had not been granted any relief.
So are you arguing or interpreting it to mean that the zoning board, in the event that a code enforcement administrator makes an interpretation of what the zoning board said for the benefit of somebody who's trying to get a building permit, grants a building permit based on that interpretation or just issues of, an opinion, that the board cannot rely on that having happened to overturn a subsequent, subsequent ruling by the same or different building official?
I think what's important is what, the facts that you have here. You have a clear set of relief that has been granted.
Right.
Which is different from what Dembiac had. But you have clear relief by this board. And your current zoning official is interpreting that relief to say what they're now advertising or were advertising or wanting to do is beyond what was previously approved. What I'm raising Dembiac for is because Kelly raised the issue of municipal estoppel, and I'm going, that's off the table. That, don't, don't, that's, that's the true red herring.
Well, let me go back to my question again. So in the event, so are you saying that the appellant had no right to rely on the interpretation that he got from the code enforcement administrator because it was a different code enforcement administrator?
Not because it's a different code enforcement administrator, it's because it's contrary to what the board actually approved.
So you're saying that the original interpretation by the code administrator was an error?
I'm getting confused about which code enforcement.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about Mr. Walker, who, who, whose affidavit is, is in part of our submission here. So are you saying that Mr. Walker's interpretation, based on your reading of the facts, was an error?
I believe his was an error. I also, with all due deference to Mr. Walker and to Mr. Potter, would call that affidavit suspect. One reason it's suspect is it's notarized by Mr. Potter. And normally, a notary cannot notarize things that they're involved in. It's also one that I do note for the record that Mr. Potter has recently purchased the property that Mr. Walker is referencing in his affidavit. So I'm not sure if it was bought from Mr. Walker or, I don't know that relation, but the deed is, is shown.
Let, let's leave that aside for the moment. So let me, if I could just restate it one more time.
I apologize for being dense.
What you're saying is Mr. Walker made an error in interpretation, and because he made an error interpretation, the appellant is not entitled to rely on that interpretation if a subsequent code enforcement administrator comes along and gives a correct interpretation, contradicts that original interpretation?
I, I agree, yes, that Mr. Hall's made the right decision. What missed, I'm not clear what Mr. Walker did or did not do, other than what he's saying in the affidavit, because the documentation that I've tendered to you, the actual applications and the actual decisions are clear about what this board did.
Okay. You didn't answer my question.
I thought I did.
No, you didn't think you did.
I think Mr. Walker's affidavit is wrong.
If he made a mistake and gave an interpretation, is that not grounds for the appellant to rely on his interpretation because someone else comes along later? Is the appellant essentially out of luck?
The appellant has the ability to come in and get relief from this board through a variance, not through a, an improper interpretation of what this board previously granted.
Okay. So I think that answer is yes.
I've, I thought I've said before, yes, Mr. Walker's wrong, yes, Mr. Hall is right.
And yes, the appellant was not entitled to rely on what Mr. Walker told them.
Correct, because it's contrary to the clear record of what this board did.
Okay. I think we got to the answer to my question.
I meant to give it to you straight, but I apologize if it was all fuzzy.
Thank you.
May I?
Please.
Would it be equally fair to say that it doesn't matter whether the applicant was entitled to rely on what Mr. Walker said or not, because that's just not an issue this board can decide?
Correct. That's the Dembiac case.
Thank you.
But they, they could go to court. They, they wouldn't be completely out of luck if that was true. If they're correct that they, that they did unfairly rely on that, they could go to court, we just couldn't do anything about it.
Correct. They could go to court and try to prove, and it's very hard to prove, the four elements of municipal estoppel.
I want to make sure I understood your question. The board, you're saying the board can decide whether or not they had the right to rely on what they were told? No?
No, what I'm saying is that this board can say, this is what we meant when we made our decision.
Right.
And we think what you're doing does or does not comply with that.
Okay.
The other argument they're making is, well, we told this zoning official or that city official or this person what our plans were, and they said it was fine.
Right.
But I think we need to distinguish between representations that were made to this board and representations that may have been made to other city officials and those decisions that may have been made.
Now I correctly understood, understand your question. We'll go into it in more detail a little bit.
I suspect we will.
A few minutes on. Is there, are there any other questions?
You heard my questions around the live-work issue, and I've gone through, although we did get it kind of last minute, the material sent us. Does your client have a view on this interpretation of live-work?
I think it's, the intention was, you are there, you're working there, you're living there. From the record that is in, that I've given you, there is no reference to renting to third parties, anything. It does, the reference to interns is in the record. So that my interpretation of reading it, if I were wearing the black robe, I'm here going, you made these representations, they granted the relief on that, that's what you're entitled to. And it, there's no reference in Mr. Chorleyan's materials of renting to third parties, nonprofits, great people down the street, whatever. It's, it's talking about these two buildings being tied, and that variance was needed because that accessory use, otherwise would have had to be connected buildings. You don't have that here.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any questions? Is there anything else?
I thank you for your patience.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who'd like to be heard in opposition to this appeal? We do have several memos here or letters. Did someone?
David's just playing with his microphone.
My accent, accent, sorry. Sorry, Steve.
Just have to draw attention to yourself now, don't you?
I know.
She whiz. We do have several memos here. These are all, I, I won't read them all because they're in the file, and, and if anyone's interested, they can, they can take a look at them. All of these are in support of the appellant's request. We have a letter from William Champney, who is, addresses at 33 Christian Avenue in Concord, but who owns buildings in this neighborhood. We have a letter from Barbara Rudeg, who is a Realtor who is in business in this neighborhood and does business in this neighborhood. We have a letter from Legacy Wise, Alberta Hernandez Franks, and Grateful O. Itiawi in support of the appeal. We have a letter from Fred and Murdy L. Potter in support of the appeal. We have a letter from David and Sharon Pickney in support of the appeal. We have a letter from Victoria Campbell, who does not say where she lives, but.
17 Church Street.
Oh, yes, at 17 Church Street, I'm sorry, who is in support of the appeal. And we have a letter from June Wilson, who lives at 2022 Church Street, in support of the appeal. I believe that covers all of the, all of the letters that we were given. Mr. Hall, comment from code enforcement?
Thank you. So I just want to, long history, a lot of details. When we first heard the appeal, I weighed very heavily on the minutes because I wasn't part of these proceedings in 2018, 2019. And if you recall, the minutes were very clear on how the live-work definition was gonna be. Mr. Hunt, Monahan references that. That's in the minutes that you folks made your decision on. The same with the accessory use of the carriage house was always accessory to the primary businesses in 135. That is in the minutes here. You have the email from Sam where there's no reference. I know they show us simulator one, I think, on the plan where there's four now. There was never a reference that they were gonna be renting those out, advertising for wedding venues, and that's where I make the interpretation that this jumps out of the accessory use of a, accessory use for that function. It becomes a commercial use when you start advertising. So that's a quick synopsis of where we got here. I'm sure you've reread all the minutes and everything we presented last time, but I just wanted to recapsulate that for you.
Questions for Mr. Hall? It's not new territory for us. Thank you. Liz O'Puck, would you like to offer anything in, by way of clarification?
I'm, I'm gonna really try and be brief. I, I appreciate your time. There were just two comments that Attorney Bolt made that I want to address. One, first of all, on the municipal estoppel issue, we're not asking you to decide that municipal estoppel applies. We're asking you to decide whether the zoning administrator's determination was correct or not in light of the fact that we had a prior determination from, on the same issue. So I will agree that the municipal estoppel issue is not on the table here. We did need to preserve it for the records, we need to preserve it for our appeal, and so we raised it. But your, the issue before you was, was the determination correct, given everything that you know? The other, the other issue that, that Attorney Bolt raised, there seemed to be an argument that the only use right now approved by the ZBA is for residential units in the mansion and the carriage house. I don't think there's been any determination on that or a challenge to that, but since it was raised by Attorney Bolt, I want to just briefly address it. There was some change in plans, and as I alluded to before, at one point, Mr. Chorleyan had presented on that. Then he went to the planning board with that plan. Midway through the planning board approval process, he changed gears. He came to the planning board with a revised plan, which the planning board approved, which is that the manse and the carriage house would be used for the general office, live-work with accessory uses. And that was what the planning board approved. That was part of what initiated my discussions with Sam Durfee, because I was concerned that there had been various zoning decisions under different iterations, and I wanted to make sure that a prior zoning decision was still valid. My letter of September 27, 2019 largely goes into that and contains some legal authority for that, which Mr. Durfee ultimately agreed with me on. As I said before, I think that's part of. As I said before, I think that's part of the record, but in case it's not, I do have copies. And then finally, on that point, I will just point out, the zoning ordinance provides that for an application to the planning board to be determined complete and for the planning board to move forward, the planning board needs to decide that the zoning...
Thank you.
...relief has been granted that is needed for that. So obviously, when the planning board went forward with that plan, that determination was made. Similarly, the zoning ordinance requires that before a certificate of occupancy is issued, a similar determination that the proposed use, the proposed improvements are in compliance with the post-site plan and the conditions of the planning board approval, which would include zoning relief. So I, I don't think that's an issue here, but I just want to rebut any assertion that the complete use of the site should be only residential units that are part of the Rollins Court neighborhood.
As opposed to the meeting space and exercise room?
And the office, and, and the office and the live work.
Okay. Questions?
That's it.
From the board?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have before us a request to overturn a determination by the code enforcement administrator that the current use of the Governor Rollins mansion and the carriage house next to it are not consistent with the zoning approvals that were previously granted, and that other zoning approvals would be needed for them to continue. I will not go through a summary of all of the testimony or even the major points, I think we're all pretty familiar with them at this point. But I will start down at the end of the table to my right with Mr. Winters and ask him, what do you think?
Um, you know, I, I last, prior to the request for the rehearing, my vote had been to affirm Mr. Hall, because I believe that the total use exceeds the use that was represented to us when we were granted the variances. I think that it was represented as high-end office use, live work. Prior to the last hearing, when we originally heard this, I actually, I read the minutes and actually listened to some of the, the actual reporting of the meeting. And it was, it was stated this, it was specifically stated that, because ultimately, this goes to parking, although it hasn't really been discussed, that, that's the, the reason why the use is relevant, because Mr. Hall says we need more parking spaces, it wouldn't be that they can't do these things per se, they would just need more parking. And it was rep, and, and the reasoning was, well, it's high-end use, so we don't need as much parking, because, you know, it's, the offices are bigger, and the live work was relevant because, well, the same person's going to be living and working there, so therefore, there won't be two different people parking. So it was relevant to our decision. I think that the, the only new information, I believe, are, are the statements from Mr. Walker, Mr. Dunphy, and I believe that goes to a municipal estoppel argument, which we don't have the authority over. So I, I would again vote to affirm Mr. Hall's decision.
I agree with Andrew. I think it is a beautiful project, and I have no doubt that you have spent an absolute fortune on it. And whether or not you did that in reliance on representations that were made by various city officials, I don't know. That's not our issue. I also appreciate you weren't the actual applicant before this board, and I wasn't on the board at the time, but based on my review of the record, the representations that were made were that the people who were living there were also going to be people that were working there, and there was never any discussion about the public rental of the fitness room or the, the community room for weddings and events like that, or for meetings by nonprofits. You know, I'm, I'm willing to say, you know, to the extent they're used by the businesses and the residents, that the race car simulators are fitness equipment, I can go there. But it's the public use of that, and as Andrew probably points out, the impact that has on the parking variance, that I just think, based on what I've seen in the record, was not contemplated by this board when that relief was granted. So I would affirm the administrative decision.
Yeah, I, yeah, I agree, I think we should affirm the decision. And I agree with you and all the other people that are coming forward, it's a beautiful building, the city is better off that the renovations were done, there's just a process that we need to go through to do it. And I, I do think, as Andrew observed, a lot of it has to do with parking, what was missing, I think, and maybe, this is unfair for me to observe this, but in the, the chronology events, there was the matter of the...
Parking variance.
They wanted to come in and, and move some buildings around, or a lot nearby to create parking for a greater use of it, which may not necessarily have to be a part of the record here tonight, but it is something that was missing from the chronology events that things have been before, so. I know, have no doubt that we, I would, I would assume and hope that if we affirm the decision, the applicant would find some way to come before us with seeking relief to, to make the property work for them.
Mr. Walker?
I agree with what's been said, I mean, basically, we have an expanded use from what we originally heard, in a nutshell, and so I'm prepared to affirm what Mr. Hall has said.
I, I believe I originally voted to uphold the code enforcement administrator, in, even if I didn't, I'm claiming I did. In the original hearing, the reason I voted for rehearing was because I read Mr. Walker's memo, his, his affidavit. Since then, as a result of what I've heard tonight, I believe that, notwithstanding what Mr. Walker said, we don't have the authority to overrule the code enforcement administrator strictly because other advice was given by another code enforcement administrator earlier on. I'm not altogether sure, that makes me happy, because I think it create, that kind of thing could create a heck of a situation for appellants, but, and did in this case. But if we don't have the legal authority to act on what was in that affidavit, then I still, I have to default back to where I was before, which was in support of the code enforcement administrator. And so I'd solicit a motion, I, also, before we do hear a motion, I want to say that Ms. Oveck Puck made a request that the board give some direction on what, where they stand in terms of what they're allowed to do and what they're not allowed to do. And what I'm hearing from my fellow board members, and maybe this will find its way into a motion, is that essentially, the code enforcement administrator's ruling is that direction, that they would need to get the appropriate relief for the uses that there are, that are actually there. Is that consistent with other people's view of things?
Yes.
Yeah? Would anyone care to make a motion?
I will make a motion that we affirm the code administrator's decision, code enforcement officer's decision, that the uses of the property as they have evolved are not consistent with the zoning relief that was granted by this board, and the specific uses are rental of one of the residential units to someone who does not work in the building, and public rental of the fitness and community meeting room facilities.
Is there a second?
Second, but I do have a question.
I have a question?
I have a question, I don't know if it's your answer or not, but the relief that's on the agenda before us is ask, is asking for us to review the administrator's decision.
Uh-huh.
And not reverse it, or uphold it.
I think the intent was...
Yeah, I think that's...
To reverse, I think that may be a bad choice of words, but otherwise, we just spent an hour doing absolutely nothing.
Well, exactly that, we reviewed it. So I think if you could just clarify your...
Review and affirm.
Review and affirm, then I will second.
Which we do have the authority to do.
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
I just want to, real quick, I said something that I, I realized may not have been accurate, I just want to make sure I correct. I, I said that perhaps they could, they could, this use is allowed if they had enough parking, I'm not sure that's correct, so I should make that clear. I said that, but I don't think that's correct.
That would be for a separate appeal.
That'd be a separate issue.
All right, we'll call for a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Anyone oppose? The vote is unanimous, the code enforcement administrator is upheld. All right, now, the next two cases, 5822 and 5922, we have a special request from the appellant, which I want to put before the board. The cases are listed 5822, 5922, in order. The appellant would like to present them as 5922 first and 5822 second, which he believes would be more efficient. Does the board have, we can leave the agenda as it is, or we can switch it? We've lost a member of the board here, too.
She went to use the rest.
Oh, all right, when she comes back, we'll address that. But what I'm going to ask the board is how they, whether they are willing to switch the order?
This is the, the self-storage?
Yes, and it was Mr. Dupree who made that request.
I'm okay with a switch.
I endorse efficiency.
Okay.
I'm okay with it.
All right. Andrew?
I'm okay with that, yeah, consolidate them.
He didn't want to consolidate them, he wants to reverse them.
A reverse order, sure.
What I don't know is if one of them is denied, is he going to go forward with the other one?
Well, he'll have to decide that, I guess.
Yeah, I just don't know if that's part of the reason.
The reason he gave when he asked me about it was that there was information that applied to one that didn't apply to the other. But he didn't go into more detail.
Yeah, it's up to him to decide if he wants to go forward with both.
Absolutely, he can do it, he's paid his money, he can take his chance.
Yeah, what is it, $397 or something?
Uh, yeah, of which we get, absolutely.
He used to say on the, on the agenda what they...
What they paid, yeah. That would make a difference in our rulings, I'm sure. The question was, how does the board feel about allowing Mr. Dupree to switch the order? You're good with it?
I don't care.
All right, sounds to me like we have a consensus. Mr. Dupree? Start us with 5922, if that's your preference, we'll go from there.
I forget how much fun these were.
Aren't they?
Uh, thanks very much.
This was the staff member.
Okay. Great, thanks. I just want to say...
I am ready to swear you in. Gentlemen, do you swear to tell the truth?
Yes.
I do.
Would you identify yourselves for the record, please?
I'm Steve Dupree, that's Sean Arnold.
I knew that, but I had to ask.
Okay, good, thank you. I'm here on behalf of both cases, but I'd like to do the two home avenue one for a couple of reasons. First, by way of background, without breaking my arm, patting my back, I am one of the people who authored the Opportunity Corridor District zoning. And how it all began, for those of you who may not have lived here as long, you will remember, we were given a large appropriation by Judd Gregg 25 years ago to do the 2020 study, and part of that study, which was a great community consensus building effort, was to look at the so-called Crud Corridor that had developed along 93. And the goal was to improve the look of Concord from 93, which has been a 30-year effort by me and a lot of other people. As part of that, we created the Opportunity Corridor District, which has these allowed uses, and the whole idea was to upgrade the whole area. My involvement began actually in 1988, when I optioned the land where the Hampton Inn is, and I was going to build my comfort in there, and I was begged by the city of Concord to put it on Hall Street. At the time, Hall Street had no streetlights, had no sidewalk, had no curb, and it didn't seem like a good idea, but it was good for Concord, they promised three things, they'd rebuild the 13 intersection, they'd end the sewer odor, and we'd get lights and sidewalks on Hall Street. We got the lightened sidewalks right away, exit 13 was done 15 years later, and we finally solved the sewer odor problem after millions of dollars of spending 25 years later. The next step that we moved forward on, we proposed a conference center that would be where Stickney Avenue garages are. Commissioner Leon Kennison, who used to be a resident of Concord, supported that idea. The idea was to move DOT up to 106, where they now are, and we put a great conference center there and changed the face of that part of the city, because at the time, we had a Chinese restaurant, we had a bus station, and we had the U-Haul, the famous orange and metal one-story buildings, which nobody thought presented a good look, and the old highway garage. We were not chosen. Another applicant was to put it up where the burned-out hazardous waste site was, which is now where Horseshoe Pond was. We were in the process of starting our building to the courtyard down where the brick tower was, for those who remember it, now the sunken submerged truck Irving Station. The developer defaulted, we were asked by City Mayor Bill Veronno to preserve the city's $3 million grant, which was under threat, if we would move our courtyard hotel north, and that became the linchpin for Horseshoe Pond, which, when we were thinking about it, that was the hope that would happen down the so-called Crud Corridor. The city's had mixed success since then, although I would argue the most success has been by me, on Hall Street, where we've invested over $40 million in two hotels and a medical building. Unfortunately, there are limited ability to further upgrade the Crud Corridor. The 93 design, and I've worked on the city committee, is going to keep the utility substation there for the foreseeable future, which is regrettable. The Department of Transportation does not have any connection to the river in any meaningful way in their proposed highway, although the city is working hard, I hope, towards looking for a substantial grant to create what I call a rooftop deck, and hopefully, we'll get that. The Store Street Shopping Center is not moving, the backside of that shopping center is going to be the presentation for Concord, and probably most readily, through a combination of bad luck and errors, the city lost out and we don't control Stickney Avenue. And the former highway garage is going to be converted into 80 apartments, there's no other use planned for that site at the current time, so the very large, vast surface parking lot, the U-Haul, the bus station, are all likely to stay there. I point that out because when you move down to Hall Street, where we've made a lot of investment to improve, and there've been a lot of good neighbors, Vintage Kitchens, there's a law office there, there's a struggling but great little cafe there, the, the, the real improvement on Hall Street has been my investment there. And we're surrounded by a mix of uses, it's a very tough zone also to keep in mind, because on the west side, which affects 62 Hall Street, we back up to Snitzer, which is a metal-crushing plant, which is not leaving, at one point, the city hoped it would, and also to a storage yard for railroad ties. When storage first came up, if you look at the zoning ordinance, the only place self-storage and the only experience Concord had was that kind of, and I'm not denigrating U-Haul with their orange metal one-story buildings, everybody figures it out, but back then, nobody wanted that facing the city of Concord, that's what was storage, and we were fearful. It didn't really increase the value of land there. So when we came up with the Opportunity Corridor, right now, the only place, you can put a strip joint, which exploits women and men sexually, in as many zones as you can storage. It's allowed only in the industrial zone, and warehousing and distribution make sense when that's what you're using a warehouse for in an industrial zone. But self-storage now in its modern iteration is a customer service. Frankly, it's one of the most requested customer services we get at the residence-in, where we tend to house people who've sold a home and are moving to another home. So a little further down, just for the record, if you cross under 93 South, down by the sewer plant, warehousing and distribution takes place. And in fact, on 62 Hall Street, we have some warehousing that predates the ordinance at the back of the lot on the west side. I point out that history because as much as the OCP was intended to upgrade the zone, there are limited upgrades that could be made. The list of the 32 uses that can be made there, most of them make great sense for things like if we were going to do another Horseshoe Pond, for example, office buildings, a concert hall, things like that. But of the 32 permitted uses, most of them make absolutely no sense anymore in the OCP. I've talked with the planning department, and eventually, that area is going to be rezoned, but that rezoning is going to follow the residential rezoning, it's two to three years out. So the only relief we have to deal with the hardship we have relating to this particular property is to come here for a variance. So what we have, here's what our goal is. First of all, and I'll talk about the building, but the lot's a very narrow lot, that when I acquired, it was a garage, that if you look at old pictures, you'll see there were a lot of what I would call junk automobiles out there, and it was bought, it was converted into a gym, and then we upgraded the gym. Unfortunately, the gym business, which is one of the few permitted uses there, has changed dramatically since COVID, and, and doesn't particularly work well. In addition to not having enough parking for many uses, for example, a restaurant would require 200 spaces, why anyone would put a restaurant on Hall Street is beyond me. An indoor recreational facility could require 300 spaces, where we have 30 or 40, we have real limitations with the lot and the site, that make the number of uses very, less than practical. A couple other things to keep in mind about the site, and then I'll show you, because most... most people think of storage as those metal buildings. We want a building that looks like a hotel. Why would I want a building that looks like a hotel? Believe it or not, in the hotel business, if you've ever driven out and been near an interstate, you always see hotels clustered together. Even though we're competitors, the more that are clustered together, the better the business does. And between the Comfort Inn and the Residence Inn, we've got a bit of a, and the Fairfield Inn, a bit of a cluster going there. So our goal is to take a building and make it look like a hotel, and even though that would be design review and planning process, I want you to see what we're talking about, because it's not what most people think of storage, which is what we've tried to ban in the OCP overall. The other thing to keep in mind, when this building was originally built, and we have a real dilemma with this building, it was built by a concrete foundation producer, and he had a brilliant marketing idea, which was to make the building out of solid concrete walls. There is no structural support other than concrete, very thick concrete walls. So when we looked at the permitted uses, attached dwelling, multifamily dwelling, elderly housing, the number of windows you'd put in to make it habitable would in turn cause a structural issue. So I'm sort of limited, same if we tried to make it into a hotel. I'm in the hotel business. Why not turn it into a hotel? The structure as it exists couldn't support a hotel. By the time you put windows in, there's not enough structure, and that's a bit of a problem. So we've been trying to find a use that would improve the district, be a service, that we know retailers and a lot of our customers on Hall Street like, that would add value, that would not increase traffic, frankly, that would not be open at night. And I'll give you another example. A permitted use is a methadone clinic. We had an offer. Somebody would like our building. They don't need many windows for that. It would be a terrible use for my businesses. We're dealing with it every day. So we have a hardship that relates to the fact we have a narrow lot that has an existing building that would be a good bomb shelter in a nuclear attack, but is not easily convertible in a zone that essentially prohibits, most of Concord prohibits any kind of self-storage, which is a weakness in the ordinance the planning department realizes and wants to address. And so hence our thinking that on both of these properties, if we could create buildings that look like hotels, that add to that atmosphere down there, improves the district, it's a much better use, it's one of the few permitted uses. A library museum is never going on Hall Street. A historic property is never going down there. There's never going to be a bus shelter down there. I don't think we're going to get a bus or rail or taxi station. Those are all ideas we had for that corridor. A conference center, I can tell you, post-COVID, there isn't much demand for any conference center, although the Chamber of Commerce, bless them, are having theirs tonight at the Gripeny Conference Center. We've had one success. I took the building pad site between the Comfort Inn and the Residence Inn, which used to be the old Channel 21. There used to be Concord Hospitals that set vacant as a medical facility. We had a number of potential medical users who looked at that facility and declined to go to Hall Street because of the challenges presented by the neighborhood and the population that frequents the clinics down there. We were just successful in getting a family practice down there, which is a great improvement to that neighborhood. And again, while you guys aren't worried about design, I just want to show you, this is the design of what we do with the building. We take what is a rather ugly, oops, it didn't run right. We want to take what is, we've got it, we can put it up on the screen. That's what the building looks like now. It's a solid concrete building. It's actually not two real full stories. It's like a story and a half. One of the reasons we couldn't convert it to office space, we'd have to gut the interior floor and then make it look a four-story hotel with the windows and the doors, because again, that's good for the hotel that are in the neighborhood. It's good for the neighborhood because it's an upgrade in use, and it's not anything like you see the orange and famous first-generation storage buildings that we tried to ban. So we have a number of hardships. I would argue that the zoning ordinance per se presents a hardship because it doesn't allow any retail service storage. It allows warehousing and distribution, but there is no zone other than the industrial zone, which doesn't fit with a retail use, that allows it. Setting that aside, we have a very narrow lot that I couldn't fit the Comfort Inn on this lot. There isn't adequate parking. I couldn't fit the Hilton True on this lot, even if I went five stories up. There's no practical demand for an office building on Hall Street or museum or conference center. And then we have a hardship related to the building itself. It's a very difficult building to convert, and other than being used for a user like clinic that does alternative drug treatment, who doesn't really care about windows, any facility rebuilding we do that would require windows would effectively destroy the structure. So you really would have to knock down the entire structure to make a real use of the land. That's without going through the five criteria, but we think it's a substantial investment. It's not against the public interest. We're across the street from a garage. We're kitty-cornered to what was a federal parolee's halfway house. We're down the street from the methadone clinic. We think it's a vast improvement to the neighborhood. Doesn't require parking, doesn't generate much traffic. It's all interior, and it would help, frankly, the hotels, because it makes it look like we have more of a hotel zone there. And that's exactly what we're going to propose across the street, too, on a bit of a smaller scale, but we think that's great for this neighborhood, at least for my investments there. John can walk you through the five criteria, but that's in a nutshell what we're talking about.
Questions for Mr. Dupree? Mr. Arnold?
All right, thank you. Maybe what I'll do, I have printouts of the renderings that you've seen two blowups of, but I'll pass those around so they're easier to take a look at.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I'd add in terms of context and background is that the facility itself would be owned and operated by an outfit known as 603 Storage. They're a local New Hampshire company. They've got about a dozen of these facilities throughout the state, over 50 years of combined experience among the owners. Operationally, there would be only one or two employees on the site on any given day. Customer access would be limited, wouldn't be any 24-access, wouldn't be any late-night access, anything like that. This type of facility generates very little traffic, virtually no heavy truck traffic. Most of the folks who come and rent units either come in their personal vehicles or kind of small U-Haul-style trucks, and only typically visit the site a handful of times, a few times over the course of the average 11-month rental. There won't be any truck rental from the property either. So the variance itself, requesting a use variance to allow self-storage in the OCP district, it's classified historically by the city as a warehousing use. There isn't a use classification for self-storage. And as Steve mentioned, warehousing is only allowed in the industrial zoning district. So before I jump into the specific criteria, just a few general observations. First, self-storage is an incredibly high-demand business right now, high-demand use. I think in the past year, you guys have seen at least two applications to expand other self-storage facilities in Concord. Second, the use is one of the lowest-impact commercial uses that I think are out there in terms of demand on municipal services, in terms of traffic generation, in terms of parking demand, in terms of noise, general activity around the site. It's all very minor. And then third, the self-storage use, although it's categorized as warehousing for purposes of Concord zoning, is fundamentally different than commercial warehousing and doesn't carry really any of the negative implications that typically come along and are associated with commercial warehousing. So for the specific variance criteria, on the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance, there's two points that I'd like to make here. First, project won't alter the essential character of the locality. The property to the north of this site is not a repair facility. To the south, you've got three hotels and an office building. The proposed facility will actually look a lot like a hotel, you can see in the renderings, and so it'll blend in to those uses, and it'll be a dramatic improvement in terms of the appearance of the site for what's there today. The second element is that there won't be any threat to public safety, health, or welfare. As I said, this is really one of the lowest-intensity commercial uses out there. There's only a couple of employees on site any given day. It's a very highly secured facility, remote monitoring, security cameras, et cetera. There's virtually no demand for municipal services, and it generates very little traffic. We're actually working on a similar facility in Londonderry for the same owner right now. It's a larger facility, about 120,000 square feet. VHB has done some preliminary traffic work on that, and they've determined that peak hour traffic volume for that use will be 20 trips per hour. And just for context, anything under 100 trips per hour is considered just normal fluctuations in daily traffic volume. So virtually no impact in terms of traffic, traffic volume. On the substantial justice, the balancing test weighs in favor of the applicant here because there's really no harm to the general public, because there are so few impacts associated with this use. There's actually a few benefits to the public. It'll improve the appearance of the property. It'll give a much-needed service that's in very high demand to the city, and it'll be a significant commercial development. It'll probably be the biggest boost to the tax roll that could go on that property, given its size and limitations. In terms of the property value, I've got one other handout I'd like to send around. This is a report that we had done by Brian Underwood. He's an appraiser. He took a look at the proposal, took a look at the site, he did a market analysis. He determined that the use would not have any negative impact on property values, mainly because the entire area has such a mix of uses currently, and that the proposed use would be an improvement over existing conditions. On the hardship criteria, there's a few unique characteristics, excuse me, unique characteristics of the property. The first is that it's a long, narrow lot with hardly any frontage on Hall Street. Tracy, are you able to put up the site plan for a moment?
Is that in the file?
Yeah, well, it's part of the application. If not, you all have it in your packets?
Yeah, we do.
Yeah.
So you can see, looking at that, that, you know, along the right side of the plan is Route 93. On the left side of the plan is Hall Street. The property is fairly long and narrow, irregularly shaped, although it has frontage on Hall Street. It doesn't have a driveway onto Hall Street. So while the property has some visibility from Route 93, it really doesn't have any visibility or much of any visibility from Hall Street for passing motorists. And so this makes it a challenge for a lot of the more traditional commercial businesses to go on the site that rely on passing traffic for success. Also, the lot's only about an acre, yet the existing building is very large. It's a little over a 10,000-square-foot footprint. So virtually any use that could go into that building would require a lot more parking than could be provided on the site, both from a zoning perspective and just a practical use perspective. The thing about self-storage is you can have a very large building that generates very little traffic and very little need for parking, and so that's why the use fits so well on this property when a lot of the permitted use is wooden. It allows a more substantial commercial development, which, as I said, generates more tax revenue for the city. The other thing is the building itself. Steve mentioned that it's built with a bored concrete structure. It was built in the mid-1980s. It's very hard to repurpose that building because cutting through walls to add, you know, doors or windows for, you know, residential use or retail use is just very challenging as is drilling holes for running, you know, facilities and cabling through the, through the structure.
But you are planning to add other floors to it.
Right up on the existing structure, correct?
Right on top of it.
Yeah.
As long as we don't cut too many holes with windows, it won't fall down.
Good.
And then finally, the property is very close to the industrial zoning district. It's only a few properties away, about two-tenths of a mile, which is the only district where self-storage is allowed. I'd note that out of all the self-storage facilities in Concord, I think only one of them is located in the industrial district. The others have either gotten zoning relieved to be located in other districts or predated the zoning. When you look at the general public purpose of prohibiting warehousing uses in the OCP district, it's likely because commercial warehousing carries a lot of negative impacts with it that aren't compatible with the uses that are typically in OCP, like residential and traditional commercial uses. But it's important to note some of the key distinctions and differences between traditional commercial warehousing and self-storage as a use, even though the distinction isn't made in the zoning ordinance. A commercial warehouse is typically a massive kind of single-story metal building that's all open, you know, one common space inside, caters to manufacturers and distributors who bring in basically tractor-trailer loads worth of materials and inventory to store in the building. And because of that use, there's a lot of employees that have to be there for unloading and loading equipment, shuffling it around the warehouse. There's the use of forklifts and heavy equipment, which generates noise and activity for the same, same reasons. And because of that, the use needs a lot of land area, not only for the big, single-story building, but also the parking for the employees, and then the paved area for the tractor-trailers to maneuver and come in and load and unload. And so it generates a lot of heavy, excuse me, truck traffic and noise, which isn't compatible, and there's a reason why the zoning would want to segregate that from the typical uses that would be found in OCP. But by contrast, when you look at our proposal and our use, the building is much different. It's an architecturally designed building that's going to blend in with the other uses in the area. The use itself is consumer-focused. It's not focused on manufacturers and distributors. It's a lot like a retail use in that sense, and it's more consistent with the permitted uses in the district. And it's only going to have a couple of employees and will generate very little traffic. There won't be heavy truck traffic the way there would, or a lot of noise the way there would with a typical commercial warehouse. So for those reasons, strict application of the restriction on, you know, warehousing isn't necessary to achieve the zoning objective and isn't substantially related to the zoning objective. The other thing is that if you take a look at the other permissible uses in the district, there really aren't many that would be viable on this property. The residential uses don't make any sense because the existing building can't be repurposed to add the additional windows and doors necessary to reutilize that structure, and there isn't enough room, even if you could, for parking around it to satisfy that demand. The service and retail uses allowed in the district don't make any sense because the property lacks that access and good visibility from Hall Street, as I mentioned. And the hotel-conference center uses don't make sense because there are already three adjacent hotels just down the street. And the lot is so small that even if you wanted to put a hotel there, as Steve said, there isn't room around it for enough parking. So that essentially leaves the transportation, communications, and utility uses, things like commercial parking lots, public utilities, bus and taxi stations. Those are all allowed in the district, but our proposal will have much fewer impacts. It'll be more attractive, generate more tax revenue, and provide a much more needed service to the community at this point in time. It'll also fit much better with the purpose of the OCP, which is to redevelop underutilized properties. So we see this project as an opportunity to really improve the property, to improve the area, and to provide a much-needed service to the city. Happy to take any questions.
Questions from Mr. Arnold or Mr. Dupree?
How many square feet?
The footprint is 10,000, and they're proposing to do four stories, 40,000 on the site, which would make it a little bit smaller, as you can tell from the Comfort Inn, but with the detail, we want it to look like more hotels and less other stuff.
Yeah, and you said there wouldn't be 24/7 access?
No, limited hours.
That common in the self-storage business, that the hours are limited, or?
On interior storage, it is. You know, when you see the old first-generation stuff, like we were designing to make sure we didn't have a lot of in the OCP, like the old U-Haul, there tends to be more access. To be very frank, it's impossible to have 24-hour access on Hall Street for anything unless you have security these days.
Ms. Inspector Morgan?
What are the permitted retail and service uses in the district?
Well, I'll give you an example. We could put a, we could put a bank down there. We could put a restaurant, but you'd need 200 parking spaces for that one that size. You could put a gas station down there. You could put a bus taxi rail station. You could put a radio-TV station. You could put a public works facility. You could put a public commercial parking lot. You could put a garden center. You could put a conference center. You can put, by right, an outpatient clinic urgent care, which is why a lot of properties have been approached for those sort of alternative uses. You can do a health-fitness center, which is what we have there now. You can do an indoor recreational facility. You can do an indoor recreational facility, but by the code, we'd need three hundred parking spaces for that. You can do a dance, music, school, studio, and that's really it for retail. They make, they make great sense in some parts of OCP when we designed it. And, I mean, I was around, and the only storage at the time was U-Haul. They were just getting into it. And the feeling of the city was it would be very easy to see some empty pieces of land developed like that, and it's not really an improvement in value. And, you know, we've, 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 every governor since Hugh Allen has promised they were going to get Concord's Stickney Avenue. And we tried a number of times, and we came close, and it's probably the biggest loss on changing that zone. I'm hopeful, on a related note, that we will get a major, we're going to apply for a major federal grant to do a roof, if you will, over ninety-three and make a connection to the river, because if we lose that opportunity now, Concord's view is forever locked in or long, at least as long as we drive cars on interstate.
Andrew.
That's cherry.
Yeah, I know, sorry. I'm a little discouraged these days about this.
Just, just to, are you, because you're, you obviously have a lot, have the plan very, very clear, but you're, you're not, are you, do you control or will you be operating six hours a search?
No, no.
Or you just, you can make representations?
We're making representations. We worked with them, yeah. And they know they got to go through design review. When they first approached me, I said, I'm, I haven't seen any self-storage that I like that I think will improve my neighborhood and my investment there. And then they showed me, and there are some, you know, the interior storage is the way people go, and it's more secure. Now, I'm not sure, you know, they have to have elevators and stuff like that, but that's where people want to go. And I said, if it looks like a hotel, so we're creating more of a hotel corridor and we're improving the value down there, that's going to be good for all of us.
But you're going to set, just lease it to them, or you're going to sell?
I'm going to sell it eventually, yeah.
Part of the thrust of your argument is that it seems to be that the zoning ordinance has a glitch in it here.
Yes.
Why not just go, I say just, why not go to the city council and the planning board and say, guys, we made a mistake here, we need to correct?
I actually had a good discussion with Carlos about that, which is a great idea. And the answer we were giving is Concord is going through a comprehensive rezoning, starting with residential. We're going to get to this zone later. And the reason we're doing the whole review of zoning is we're tired of people coming in and doing piecemeal ones, even though we know there are a lot of corrections that need to be, to be had. So you can wait two or three years till we get to it or apply for variance.
I see. Okay. Any other questions on the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Is there, excuse me, anyone here who wishes to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who wishes to be heard in opposition to it? Any comments from code enforcement?
Just a couple of things. You'll note in your memo, we had asked for these elevations in order to evaluate the application. Prior to the meeting, they were not received until after close of business today, so the code department hasn't had the opportunity to review any of the handouts that you were given this evening. If the board finds particular pieces of the application important or the representation of the hours of operation and those sorts of things, I would encourage you to make conditions in the motion. We've talked a little bit before about making specific motions, and that seems to be a pretty firm representation by the applicant, and it would be appropriate to add a condition about their office hours of operation.
Very good, thank you. Is Mr. Dupree, Mr. Arnold, would you like to make any comments? No, good to go? All right. With that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance, essentially a use variance on the property. We heard that there were several aspects of both the building and the land that militated against using the property the way the ordinance permits, and the, the, the appellant suggested that this use is consistent with the general character of the neighborhood. I'm going to start at your end of the table, Mr. Wall.
Well, I think because the area has such, allows so many varied uses, contrasting uses, I think this certainly would probably fit in very nicely. I think it would certainly be in the public interest to do it the way it's been designed. I think it would add value to the, to the neighborhood. I think it certainly wouldn't diminish the values of surrounding properties, and I think the hardship is, given the lot's size and some of the variance restrictions, that hardship is persuaded, is persuaded to.
Got it. Great, I think Nick captured it well. I did ask a question about hours of operation, but honestly, I think that's probably up to the business owner. The hotels next door operate twenty-seven, twenty-four-seven. The applicant said that it would be a risky venture to operate twenty-four-seven. It's really the business owner's choice, not ours.
I agree.
Andrew.
Yeah, I think, I, I, I have to, you know, reject the argument that, you know, it's a hole in the, in the zoning, because, I mean, he kind of, he kind of knows that. I mean, we, we can't let that be an influence, but I think they raised enough other valid points about the unique nature of the building, with the foundation not really supporting much, and the lot that is a valid variance, in my opinion.
Now, one question I have about it, I, I'm inclined to agree with the fellow board members about the conditions for a variance. We've seen a specific representation of a building here that, and the appellant's request depends heavily on this building being what we see here. So I am wondering if whoever makes a motion might not want to include the renderings that we've seen here as representative of what we are approving, and that anything that is significantly different from that would need to come back. Is that?
So it's a rendering, it's also the, I don't think I want to say it's not orange, but.
It can't be ugly.
But it was, yeah, but that it's interior access to the storage units.
Right. We heard a representation that would be interior access. We heard, we saw rendering suggesting what the building would look like, the character of the building, and the scale of the building, all of which were meant to figure into our decision.
And, you know, as the, as the first case, you clearly, you know, illustrated, the, the representations of the applicant should be, I don't know if implicit condition, but they, if, if.
They are implied.
They're an implied condition. So I'm not opposed to adding that on, but I don't think it's, it's necessary.
Okay.
However.
Does no harm.
We've learned a lesson that, you know, it, it, eventually, the minutes will, you know, it can only be so perfect, so it probably does make sense to be pretty clear about what, you know, what we think is important. I'm fine with, you know, adding that on.
Some judge winds up reading this someday. We don't want them to be confused.
Right.
Would anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
To approve?
To approve both the use variance and the parking variance. I believe that the property is unique, given its size and the existing configuration and construction of the building. I do not believe that self-storage will alter the essential character of the neighborhood, nor will it present a public health, safety, or welfare threat. I don't believe self-storage will diminish surrounding property values, and I don't believe there's any benefit to the public from denying this variance, either variance, which would be outweighed by a gain to the public. I would note that this decision is based on certain representations that have been made to this board regarding it not being open twenty-four-seven. I'll leave specific hours of operation to the planning board, and the building looking more like an office or hotel building than a traditional self-storage facility.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
I just want to make it clear that the applicant is asking for, except for warehousing, but we're clear, it is self-storage.
Interior self-storage.
Interior self-storage.
Yes.
Because there is no such specific use category. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous. The variance is granted. That brings us back one step to fifty-eight, twenty-two, which would be sixty-two Hall Street. Is that right?
No.
Yes.
Two home, right?
No, that was, you just did two home.
Just did two home. So sixty-two Hall Street, we have a request. The owner wishes to replace the existing service business facility with a four-story self-storage facility. This activity would require the following variances. An Article twenty-eight, two-four-J, table of principal uses, to allow for warehousing as the primary use. Article twenty-eight, seven-two-E, table of off-street parking requirements, to allow the reduction of twenty-eight parking spaces to twenty-eight, to twenty-eight rather than fifty-six? Is that what we're doing?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Twenty. It says a reduction of twenty-eight parking spaces, twenty-eight rather than fifty-six. In other words, you would be.
No, I think, I think you're reading home ave. I think that was a typo on the public notice. The.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The property is fourteen instead of thirty-eight.
Uh, no, I'm reading, I'm reading Hall Street. Look at item two.
Flip-flop.
Did the notice flip them?
I think so. Let me take a look at the application.
Because home ave was twenty-five parking spaces, fourteen rather than thirty-nine.
Yeah, the application says fourteen to thirty-nine.
Yeah, I think it's flipped on whatever you're reading, because the plan and the application that we submitted is on Hall Street, fourteen instead of thirty-eight, and on home ave, we don't need any parking relief. We didn't include that as part of our request that we just went through.
Okay.
Do you agree with that, Tracy?
I'm looking.
So.
We gave you a variance you didn't ask for.
No, they did.
A freebie?
How often does that happen?
Can we take, put it in the pocket and keep that in case we need it?
You didn't give it for the last one.
We did give, parking one for the last, didn't we?
So Chris, in the first narrative.
Even though we don't need it.
You don't listen to me, John.
There's no parking.
Yes, for the use, that's what it says.
Fifty-eight, twenty-two, there was no parking?
If you look at the second page on the top, it just says to allow self-storage use.
Yeah, they both say that, though.
But it doesn't have a parking.
Neither one does.
The second one does.
Does it?
Yeah, right here.
The, the plan in your materials has the parking calculations on them. It's probably the easiest place to look.
Well, we can, we can go ahead with the hearing. If it turns out that there's some misunderstanding about the parking, you'd have to come back.
Yeah.
So we're at fifty-two, case fifty-eight, twenty-two, sixty-two Hall Street, and what we're talking about is a request to offer a variance to the table of principal uses to allow warehousing as a primary use.
Still sworn?
Still sworn.
Do you need the parking for this one?
So, so there is a, this property does need a parking variance. The first one did not, but the numbers are not the numbers that you were just reading. We're asking for fourteen spaces instead of thirty-eight.
Fourteen instead of thirty-eight, oh, right.
Thirty-eight on the plan.
Yeah.
I don't know where the numbers in the public notice came from.
Just before we get too deep in this, Chris, if it wasn't noticed, what was noticed, I guess, is what I want to know, because I don't want to go through a long parking calculation.
It sounds like thirty-nine.
I can look at the notice, hold on.
Thirty-nine was noticed. Well, the good news is, we're asking for less, so it's even less onerous than what people might be afraid of.
But if you were granted what was noticed, you could live with that?
We don't want that many.
They're asking for less.
If they're asking for less, you're legal.
Yes.
Right.
That we understand.
If the public notice was for more relief than we're asking, and we're granted less relief, I think you're okay.
So you're okay going forward with that?
Yes. Yeah, cool. Still sworn, this one, you've got all the background on it. This would be a companion-type building. This property backs up against the railroad tie and utility pole storage. We actually have some storage predates when I bought it. There's storage along the west side of the building. Some of the garage bays were used for storage, vehicular storage when we bought it. We've tried to move that out. It's an old property, it's a tired property, it's got a terrible mix of uses. Originally, it was purchased by me because I thought we might need more parking when we first built the residence in. Back when we first started building hotels, there were two spaces required for every hotel room. We've been successful getting that to fit better. It's an extraordinarily narrow lot. The intent here would be to build a companion building, same sort of design considerations. I did note from the last case, we still have to go back to the planning board. We've given you the representation of what we want to do, but we're obviously subject to planning board review. I note from the code administration memo that there may be, we may need a recommendation from the planning board since there may be site plan issues. If there are site plan issues, we'll work those out with the planning board. We think that's the proper spot for that, and if we determine from working with site plan review that we need further variances, we'll come back. But it's intended to be a companion property. Again, it would match the one across the street. Right now, that's a single-family house out front. Behind it, along the west, excuse me, the south border is a concrete building, currently the home to an ambulance service that serves the community. Garage facilities, that is people who provide garage repair. And then along the very far west wall, there's a single storage building that rented out storage for a number of years, and that use predated the, the creation of the OCP, is my understanding. It's long before I had it. Again, the challenge with this lot, we have the same thing, we have no visibility, the lot's underutilized, it will never be a great place for an office or a hotel because of our neighbors further to the west, which those uses aren't going to change. And it's a very narrow lot with limited access. On the south side of the lot, there was litigation between, at one point, predating my ownership between sixty-two and seventy-two over the boundary, and I know the owner of seventy-two, who's a friend, was concerned that the plan we have wasn't going to encroach on them. It is not. Again, it would have to go through site plan review. The same representations that we made in the prior case would apply here. The challenge of this lot is it's too narrow for any other functional use other than, than a building that goes up rather than out. We've got a great building, two great buildings to the north. There's been a redone residential house, and then the kitchen showroom is there. But the same uses further south, we've got a former parolee rehabilitation house, the same neighbors are there. So we think that this is a great use, will improve the district, again, create more of an upscale appearance, substantial investment. And the hardship here is that it's an extraordinarily narrow piece of land that the only way you can effectively use it, other than leaving it in the state it is now, is to go up rather than out. There's no room for it.
Are you planning to tear down what's there now?
Yeah, everything would come down.
So you would build a new building that looks like this guy?
Bingo.
Okay.
So if you can build a new building that looks like that, why can't you build a multi-story, multi-story residential building?
The problem is the parking with the lot size, that's the uniqueness of the self-storage. So if you build a building that looks like that for residential, there's no room around it for parking. So if you build a new building for a different commercial use, you can do it, but you wind up with a very small commercial building to leave enough room for parking, and then it's underutilizing the property in the OCP district.
And it's not a particularly attractive place when you back up to the railroad storage yard, because it seems to be a favorite camp.
So it's a gathering place?
Yeah, gathering.
Do they have railroad, access to the railroad property?
No.
So their ties don't come in by rail or?
Oh, the, no, they come in by rail. Yeah, they, they bring them in by rail, and the other day, in fact, we had a big six-train carload of utility poles, you know, power poles. They bring those in by rail, they bring in the railroad ties. Schnitzer brings in the metal.
Not to this property, but to the.
Right behind it. Yeah, okay. Yeah, yeah. Between us and the yard is the railroad track, that's it. So really, I mean, you're not going to put an office building there, a bank, a restaurant, any of the permitted uses. This is a.
A railroad station? There's a reason that was included in the.
Yes, originally, I mean, yeah, not too long ago, when the, when the state first contemplated selling Stickney Avenue, one of the provisions was that they, the thinking was the bus station would move down to where the industrial yard is, where there now going to be apartments, and there'd be a rail platform there, because that made a better location. And then that whole area that we're talking Stickney all the way up to the three-ninety-three bridge could be another horseshoe pond, and that was, and what I hoped was a new trade show center space, so the center of New Hampshire would be where all the trade shows came.
Mr. Arnold, did you have something more to offer on this one, or?
I guess I'd just add a couple of things quickly. I'd incorporate all the testimony we gave on the prior application, because it's equally applicable in the variance criteria of this site, with a couple of distinctions I'll point out. On the public interest and spirit of the ordinance, the other things about this property is that the current uses on the property are non-conforming, as an ambulance service in the front, auto repair garage, and self-storage in the rear. Steve mentioned it's also adjacent to that large storage lot behind it for railroad ties and utility poles. On the parking variance, uh, the parking calculation under the ordinance is based on warehousing, um, but as noted, the self-storage generates a lot less demand for parking than warehousing use does. The 14 spaces that are being provided are consistent more than enough based on the operator's historic experience with their other sites. It's more parking than they're going to need. But I'll also point out that, um, by the zoning calculation, we're 24 spaces short here. The application we were just talking about on Home Ave, um, has a surplus of 28 spaces. So, they're, the site's going to be operated in conjunction with each other as one business so that, to the extent there's overflow parking that's needed, it'll be available just across the street with the other building.
But if you wanted that accounted for, you'd have to get a CUP, would you not?
Well, if, if we were going to use it to satisfy parking demand, and I'm not proposing that, but, yeah, we could. I just meant-
So, now I'm totally confused about parking. 62 Hall Street, where, where 14 spaces is what you'd like to put in?
Yeah.
Is it 38 that are needed or 39?
38 is required. Well, our calculation was 38. I think the notice that went out said 39, so.
All right. Although it said it about 2 Home Avenue. Yeah, okay. Very good. And do you agree with the calculation, Tracy?
Yeah, I'm looking at the calculations on the plan, sorry.
Okay, good. Very good. Uh, anything else, gentlemen? Thank you very much.
All right, well, I'm sorry to dwell on the parking things.
What's that?
So, for 62 Hall Street, your design assumes 28 parking places.
Assumes 14.
No, um, we provide 14 on this site, 38 are required, so that's a deficiency of 24 spaces. On Home Ave, the application we just did, uh, it provides a surplus of 28 spaces. We need 28, we're providing 56 over there. So, what I'm saying is that the shortage on this site is more than offset by the surplus on the adjacent side.
Right, I understand that. So, let, let me just ask you another way. How many parking places do you, are you going to provide for at 62?
14.
14, okay. 56 are required.
No, 30.
38.
According to their calculation.
We'll call it 39.
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to-
Yeah, 14.
What was noticed, I'm sorry.
Right, noticed was 39. We thought it should be 38, call it 39, we're on 14.
All right.
Just from a practical point, as you point out, if we wanted to use the parking across the street, even though it's going to be run as one facility, technically you'd need a CUP, but from a practical standpoint, people will park across the street.
Which I doubt they'd ever do.
Right.
I mean, for a, well, that's neither here nor there. Um, very good. Any other questions from the board? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks.
Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? Is there anyone who'd like to go home and go to bed? Ooh, I got some, I got some yeses on that.
We're going to talk about that after this.
Comments from code-
We're going to get to everybody who's here tonight, all right?
Yeah, I think I should, yeah. Comments from code enforcement, yes, please.
Yep, so, um, I'd like to note that their plan for this particular, um, property is not based on a survey, it's based on the GIS maps. We like to caution people that those are pretty inaccurate sometimes. We have been alerted to and found a deed and a decree that may differ from the plans, which would alter the setbacks and the use. So, that was not resolved prior to this meeting.
Okay.
In addition, um, as was stated in my memo, sometimes it's prudent for the board to ask for the opinion of the planning board. It's provided for in your rules, um, there's a reason it's there, and the reason it's there is to feel, to, when there are things that are based on zone or the future land use, you want to get their check-in with the master plan. It's, the master plan's their document, so when you're looking at what was, you know, thought of in a district when it was created, generally speaking, you don't defer to a member of the public, you defer to the board because it's their document. So, um, I would say that, I would strongly, um, I feel strongly about that on this application. The neighborhood, even though it's across the street, are very different, um, and I think that that, that should be given some, some thought anyways. Um, I think those are my two big points.
All right.
So, you're suggesting we defer action on this until we get an opinion of the planning board?
Yes. Not defer action to the pla, it's, it's, yeah, they have 60 days to respond, so it's not a long delay, but I would recommend that you delay until the planning board has a chance to at least give you their opinion.
The delay are-
Decision.
So, they maintain the public hearing element or the, it's still closed?
Continue it, yep.
But could, can, so not deliberate today, basically?
You can deliberate, but don't conclude.
All right. Mr. Dupree, Mr. Arnold, did you have anything further to offer?
Yeah, two points. Erin Lambert's the engineer on this, we're well aware of the zoning decree. She was traveling today, but she's pretty confident that the, even though she used the GIS map, that it, the site plan conforms to it, and if it doesn't, that's something we take up at planning. If you don't meet the planning regulations, you have to revise your plan.
Unless you created, created a zoning violation.
Exactly, so-
If it doesn't, then no.
Yeah, with all due respect to that, even though it wasn't able to be checked, Erin's pretty confident that it was designed in accordance with that. If it isn't, it would be designed, and the zoning board generally doesn't get into site plan, creating the site plan for this. And with all due res-
Sorry, who's Erin?
Our Erin Lambert, our engineer. Who did the plan. And I've looked at the court documents that are of record as well and compared them to the GIS, and it, it looks to me like the GIS mapping has picked up that lot line adjustment, which was 12 feet.
I, so that's that, the, the stuff I think, the other point, though, I think that Tracy's trying to make is that, is, is the representations made by the applicant were that, well, they're going to change this anyway.
No, it was the, it was the, there's an easement they're not discussing that, that may impact the zoning.
But those are private issues, those aren't our issues.
And the easement-
Except that the easement holder has to be noticed, and I don't know that they were.
Oh.
The easement holder was in a butter. Of course he was noticed.
I don't know that that's still the case. I, I didn't research the title.
Well, the easement, I can, I will testify under oath, which I would like to do, that the easement holder is the abutter who is in the court case.
I think we can probably act on this, if there's an irregularity in the notice and we have to come back to it, we can do that.
Okay, yeah.
If there isn't, then we needn't-
Right.
-worry about it. I think we can, it, because it does, it sounds to me like a technicality that could be remedied one way or another. Um, okay, is that it, gentlemen?
Yeah, and I, I'm, this is a decision on a variance from the code, not the site plan review and what the planning board views as the master plan. I mean-
Well, it's, it's, the master plan figures into it because we're supposed to be deciding whether or not this is consistent with the intent of the ordinance.
Right.
Which is supposed to be based on the master plan.
Do I detect-
But that would send any zoning applications-
You don't detect anything? I'm completely innocent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we'll declare, declare the hearing closed. Public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a variance to build another, uh, self-storage unit similar to the one that was proposed for Home Avenue on this lot. We heard similar arguments for the variance based on the lot configuration and its, its, uh, situation in the neighborhood. And we also heard a, a recommendation from code enforcement that we consult with the planning board as to whether or not granting a use variance in this case is consistent with the master plan. Why don't we start with Ms. Specter Morgan, who hasn't had a chance to go first yet tonight?
I have a harder time with this one than the one across the street because there's not the existing building there, and so I think there might be other uses that can be made of the property that perhaps weren't explored. That being said, it is a narrow lot, and I appreciate the representations about the inability to put something else on there and have sufficient parking, though we don't have sufficient parking here either, so I think that's kind of a wash. Um, I don't think it's going to alter the essential character of the neighborhood, but I agree the other side of the street is somewhat different from the hotel side of the street. Um, I don't think it's going to diminish surrounding property values, and I don't think there's going to be any harm to the public from granting the variance, so I think on balance, I'm in favor of granting both variances. And whether or not it's consistent with the master plan isn't really something that comes into our consideration, so I don't think I need weigh-in from the planning board, but if other people do, I'd certainly be open to that.
Okay. Jim?
Um, yeah, I'm trying to avoid comparing it to the, to the other one, but clearly there are hardships associated, primarily associated with the narrowness of the lot and the inability to provide parking for other potential uses on it. Um, I'm, I'm inclined to vote yes, but I'm going to wait for the chairman's guidance and wisdom on the issue revolving, involving the, the planning board, that code enforcement raised.
That's a heavy load to carry. Mr. Waiters?
Um, yeah, I think it's a closer call, but ultimately, I, I also think that the two unique issues on this lot that I see are that it's a very narrow lot making apartments or any other type of use difficult with the parking that would have to be provided, and also that the, that the nearby properties with the railroad yard and, um, I think the methadone clinic, I don't know if it's even a butter, but it's nearby, make this difficult to develop in another way. Um, as far as Tracy's suggestion to, I mean, and I appreciate the perspective she, she brings, um, it's interesting, it, it, I don't think that's, I can't ever remember doing that before, which doesn't mean it's something we shouldn't do, it's just sort of a novel idea to me, so I don't exactly know when or if we should do that, to be honest, so I'd also be interested in guidance from-
I don't believe we've ever, I don't remember doing it, but it doesn't mean it didn't happen. My memory sometimes fails.
Yeah, I mean, I think the considerations for me are, on the one hand, we could get valuable information, um, on the other hand, there's, it causes delay, which is not in and of itself bad, but we don't want to regularly do that because making fairly quick decision, making timely decisions is also important. Um, we want to balance doing it well and also doing it, you know, fairly timely.
Nick?
I agree with what they've all said. Nothing further to add.
Okay. Um, in, in general, I think the arguments are reasonable in terms of the, the hardship, and I agree with Ms. Specter Morgan's enumeration of the other criteria in terms of how she views it. I view it the same way. As to the, um, consulting with the planning board, if, if we were to consult with the planning board and they were to give us an ambiguous answer, how would that affect our decision? If they were to say, oh, my goodness, this is a terrible idea, would we then say, well, then it's inconsistent with the intent of the ordinance? Um, obviously, if they said, nah, we don't have a problem with it, we would vote as I suspect the board is about to vote. I don't, I can see certain situations where it might be, where we might have an extraordinary situation where we did want to collaborate with the planning board. This one does not strike me as being that level of, uh, extraordinaritude. So, I'd be inclined to go ahead and make a decision on what we consider to be the merits. Yes?
Yeah, I was going to say, um, I don't want this application, this applicant to get caught in the crossfire in this thing, too, but I should say, occasionally, we'll have Carlos or the city attorney, someone come in and say, hey, look, just know that this application for you is very inconsistent with plans the city has. Very recently, we had the Outdoor Garden Center on Manchester Street that somebody besides the applicant, from the city, had to come and say, oh, wait a minute, this is going to disrupt this big housing unit that's going in behind it. So, the fact that nobody's come in from the city, um, on this to raise it, that's not probably good enough, but that's been the practice.
I didn't consult with any other departments on this application.
Okay, okay.
The other one I, I, I recall now was with the, there was a, with the signs on Main Street. I remember, is it Rich, the chair of the planning board? He came in and spoke on an issue on the signs, maybe three or four years ago, he felt strongly about it.
I don't remember that, but I might not have been here. The, the, certainly anybody can come in and testify, including somebody from City Hall.
Yeah.
The, I, I, it, we are in a sort of an odd situation because the zoning ordinance is undergoing a major overhaul, uh, and nobody knows really what's going to happen, especially with the commercial side of it, which has not even really been drafted yet, um, which means that we, we really, I think, our, our responsibility here is to make our own decision about whether we think this is consistent with the intent of the ordinance, which in, in the case of Hall Street, is A, to prevent incompatible uses from jamming up against each other, which nobody, I don't think thinks is, this is incompatible, and, um, B, whether or not it's, it's consistent with the, the, uh, opportunity corridor performance district overlay. And I think we can make that decision. But your suggestion is well-taken, and there may be situations where it's precisely what we want to do. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move to approve.
Based on everything we done said?
Based on, based on, in my mind, the narrow lot and the, the nearby properties making any other, um, any other use difficult or, you know, not feasible.
We have, in the past, considered the configuration of the lot definitely to be on hardship, grounds for hardship, if in fact it is, and the situation of the lot to be as well. Uh, is there a second?
Can I suggest to Andrew, though, that because most of the representations we heard about the, the style and things are all in the, the record in the other case, so the conditions about being a self-storage warehouse and-
Yes, and looking like-
Absolutely, right.
This one?
Yeah, absolutely. All the, and I think they said it was incorporated, but all the representations, um, previously made for 59-22, I believe it was, are also considered representations for this variance.
Good catch.
Want a clarification? So, you want the motions in the two applications to be-
Basically the same.
Basically the same. I just want to make sure that, that we have rights to the minutes.
Yeah, yes.
Okay.
Except about to park and-
Right. Now, we're granting the parking variance.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
We'll make the second.
I second it.
The variances are granted. You are welcome, gentlemen. All right, that moves us on to case 20, excuse me, case quadruple zero.
It's because of the new perimeter.
I go to four digits, probably.
Uh, we're going to quadruple zeros now.
So, because of our new computer system, our numbering has gone a little wacko, so please just ignore it.
Okay. So, anyway, it does say quadruple zero here, so I get to say that yet again. Twenty-two, 21 Becky Lane, R.O. Open Space Residential District, Kevin M. Cluff. The owner wishes to construct a detached two-car garage with a carport, and he, this activity would require a variance from Article 28-47F, perimeter buffer required to allow an encroachment on the north buffer.
Yeah, this is what I've been today.
Mr. Cluff?
Yes.
You swear to tell the truth?
I will, I do.
And would you identify yourself formally for the record, please?
Kevin M. Cluff.
What would you like us to know? We have read your application, but fill us in on, on the high points of why you feel the variances is justified.
Uh, okay, um, so, I would like to put a detached garage, um, this is not a very good picture here, um, on my lot here. Due to the kind of a choke point here on my border, on my property line here, the buffer zone comes in forty feet and leaves me very little room. So with my, I'm trying to think, I want to say, with my design, I would like to come into the buffer roughly nine feet with my, with my site plan.
Are you in a, you're in a plan unit development? Is this her?
Cluster?
Cluster development?
Yeah.
Okay.
So I, all my neighbors are aware of this and I spoke to my neighbor down below, the Spains, that you can't even see them in this picture. They're, they're down below. I have plenty of useless land down below that I can't do anything with. My property is basically a postage stamp of flat ground and anything beyond the driveway, you can use as a ski slope. It's pretty much just downhill. So I have very little flat ground and the only flat ground I have is where the driveway is. I looked at placing it behind the driveway, but due to the angle, it doubled the price of the thing and pretty much isolate my backyard. So the only thing I could do is just get into that buffer by nine feet, only for sixteen feet because due to the angle of the property line that it does taper off. So it'd just be dipping into it just a little bit.
I can't read the digits on the topo. Are we going, if we, as we go from your driveway toward where you're proposing to put the garage, are we going downhill?
It is all downhill, but it's, yes.
Okay. So are you then planning to put your, your garage more or less at the same level as the house and fill under the carport?
It's, well, it's fairly flat, but there'd be just a little bit of fill if I can put it right where the, basically where the shed and the trailer is in this picture here. You don't have one up, but in this, in the picture I have in front of me. I feel like I should have had like everything everybody else brought.
I did put the contours up, if anybody was curious.
Yeah, it's, it's all sloped.
All right. I'm just trying to understand how this works on the site. So did you have a drawing of what you're proposing to build here somewhere?
Yeah, just a one-story, yeah.
Okay. So I.
Well, you can see there where the driveway is.
Yeah.
That little flat spot.
You can go up there.
Right there, yes.
Yeah, you can go on up and point to wherever you want to.
Right where the pointer just was.
Yeah?
Yeah, that's like the flat spot.
Okay. So you'd enter on the long side, straight off the house?
Correct.
Okay, I understand. So you would need a little fill there if this topo's accurate?
Yeah, yeah, that's like the only flat land.
Okay.
And due to the taper, it's, the buffer zone comes pretty much right in to, it kind of eliminates me doing anything there.
Why not put it a little bit closer to the, closer to the driveway? And skip, and move it out of the setback?
I would, but to back a trailer in is almost impossible when you put a trailer and a vehicle in there without taking out the house. Or detaching it and trying to walk it in, it makes backing it impossible. By pushing it back just a little bit will allow me to put an apron in and back the vehicle in. Just do it right the first time and just be done with it.
Who, what's immediately to the, let's see, I don't know, what, do we have an orientation here? Yeah, north. What's more or less, what's immediately to the north of your property there on the other side of property line?
So that's number nine?
Yeah, that'd be the Spains.
Is it, is it a lot, somebody's house?
Yes, yeah, there's a house there.
You can see it over there.
You need to click on the twenty twenty.
This is nine.
Twenty twenty overview.
All right.
Do you already have a garage?
I have a garage, a shed.
You don't have, you don't have a two-car garage already?
It's, it's attached.
So this would be like four cars worth of garage?
Six.
Six.
Oh, five. It's with an overhang, just an open overhang for the trailer. Because right now, everything's just stuffed in the woods, kind of.
Other questions from the board?
There's something that got cut off here on the, it says there, there is heavy tree coverage between.
The neighbors in my lot.
The neighbors in your lot.
They're actually down below, so they like literally can't even see.
So is it just, did you, I think you must, said you have a lot of, did you say you have a lot of toys? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I have like a work truck and a, and a personal truck, so it's like everything's just stuffed in the yard.
So, but why do you need so, so much garage space? It's, it's a personal resident. It's, it's.
Yeah.
Yeah, why do you need so much garage space just for?
I just don't like things out. So my wife has a car, my daughter has a car, I have a personal truck, and then I have a work truck, and I have a boat. So every, I like to put everything in a home. And then I have my trailers that are sitting out, a stone, a fourteen-foot stone wheel trailer, I have a utility trailer. So everything's just kind of sitting out in the open.
Are the trailers mostly in support of your occupation or are they in support of use for around the house?
No, I like the stone wheel trailer has stone wheels and the utility trailer just sit there. This is just a single, single level, or just a garage with just electricity in it.
Can you, I'm sorry, where's Becky Drive? What part of town is that?
East. It's east, like off a Shaker. Go up past Shaker School and go up, it's an intersection, a hot hole at the four way there. It's kind of like out.
Yeah, and it's built into the side of a hill, right?
Yeah. You can like throw a rocket aloud.
Well, they might throw it back. You don't want to do that. Other questions from the board? Andrew?
No.
What is this? I actually do have a question. So on the, never mind, I figured it out. Never mind.
One more question. Is it, because to be honest, I see, I see the hardship in the sense that you really have you, you don't have much buildable space in your lot, but I, I'm getting caught up on the reasonable use because it's, I mean, are there any other properties in your, is that common in your neighborhood have so much garage space? Do you know of any other like houses nearby that have?
I mean, my, my in-laws moved in with me too, so they have a car also, so I'm kind of like really trapped for.
That could be a hardship of mine.
I mean, that is a hardship in itself. This is like closed circuit, right?
We're, we're on TV and I'm probably going to be looking for a new job next week.
But it's just one single family house. It's not an in-law, you know, they'll be living in, with you.
Yeah, there, yeah. So they have a vehicle also, so there goes one of my base.
So it isn't impacting lot coverage?
Right, right, right.
Any other questions?
And I have like to work on things, like now you're out in the driveway, wrenching, which is.
Is there anything else you'd like us to know?
No, I think that's it for me. I mean, I just would like to, you know, put a, put a garage.
We got it.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in favor of this appeal? Is there anyone here who'd like to be heard in opposition to it? I did get a letter here, I believe. Yes, this is from Catherine Tucker, who is from thirty-seven Becky Lane. And she writes in support of the request. Comments from code enforcement?
I think you hit most of my notes. I'd just like to mention that when you're looking at the area, there is already a structure where this garage is going and that's, there's kind of an application to move that to a different portion of the lot.
Okay.
Just in case you're wondering why, there's already something there.
Okay.
You mean, when you say application, you mean another variance?
Another building permit application.
Oh, building permit.
To move it somewhere else. It wouldn't require a variance, but it does need to be relocated.
Okay, with that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. Invite discussion. Let's start at Nick's end of the table this time. What do you think, Nick?
Jim hasn't gotten to go first.
Oh, what?
Jim hasn't gotten to go first.
I haven't.
Have you?
I'm happy to go first. Yeah, I'm inclined to.
Jim gets to go first.
I support every, I support everything.
I'm the chairman. I decide who goes first. Jim, what would you like to do?
I support everything Nick said.
Okay.
No, I think.
It's getting late, isn't it?
Yeah, I'm inclined to support this. I think as a general matter, we have seen garages, as long as they're not too big, is a net benefit because they clean up the neighborhood and get things undercover and things like that. And this is, the hardship is really, the topographical map probably demonstrates it. You know, it is a very sloped piece of property and it didn't seem to be another spot to put it, put it on.
Nick, your turn.
I agree with everything Jim said. Okay.
Andrew?
I can't see what zoning district this is in, but I get the impression it's a pretty, it's a pretty large lot, pretty.
It's R O.
Oh, yes, so they're pretty far away. I mean, I, I'm a little caught up on the, you know, whether it's really, you know, reasonable, quote reasonable use, but I suppose in an R O, it's pretty common that people will have a lot of vehicles and will be doing a lot of work and have trailers and so forth, so I, I agree.
This plan is dated two thousand eight and it must have been done when the house was built. I think the finished topo represented on this plan is not actually accurate from looking at the photographs, which would support the appellant's argument. I think that the fill went further out to the, where was I trying to find the north arrow again? Yeah, further out to the north than this suggests, because otherwise he'd be building this thing down in a hole and that's not the way it looks. So I think the topo argument's legitimate in terms of the way things look. Would anyone care to make a motion?
Move approval.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No, I don't see the hardship.
Okay. The next case is seventy-eight Lilac Street, which is triple zero one, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, we need to take a little break and. Thanks.
Okay. Would you like to take a break?
Sure.
We have two more, correct?
Three.
Three more, and it's ten of five.
And the last one seems like a big one.
That's the apartment.
Yeah.
Somehow I lost my agenda. We have the, the one we're about to do.
We, we, we are approaching the time when we get a little giddy around here.
In case you couldn't tell.
Oh, right. Yeah, okay.
We, we customarily don't start new cases after ten o'clock. Now, when Jim raised the question before, are we going to do everything tonight that's here? Where is the appellant? Is the appellant here for case zero-three, five Thomas Street?
Yeah.
How would you feel about having your case recessed? We could do it next Wednesday, could we not?
Yes, we can.
I unfortunately, unless I, I'd have to get a babysitter, so I don't know right now.
Well, we could, we.
Or you, you know, maybe someone else could.
Yeah.
But for me, it's the day after the elections, as you know, I'm working a sixteen-hour day that day before, so.
So you don't want to do Wednesday?
Rather not, but I can if it, if I lost Phil's.
Yes.
Yeah, I have to be out of town for quite some time, including next week, so. If we continue, it'll have to be until the next, next month.
December.
The summer meeting?
Could you tolerate that?
I'll be better than staying here for midnight, right?
Well, it might be better if you had a board that wasn't delirious too, with fatigue. Pardon?
Chris, can we find out how many people are here to speak on that case, like just by a show of hands?
How many people are here concerning the five Thomas Street? You know, we've got a lot of people.
I can respect if people want to recess because, you know, but I personally am fine staying to see it through just.
I am too.
I was until midnight last night.
There's staff considerations too, I mean.
I think, I think we should, I think we should recess the case.
I think we should continue.
Until December seventh.
Continue it to December.
And we'll do it first.
Yeah.
We'll do that.
And I, I do apologize to those of you who spent a very enjoyable evening here.
We're entertaining.
Yeah, I'm sure it was. Unfortunately, we don't control, I make my little plea for ten-minute presentations and you can see how much respect I get.
They'll be first, they'll be first.
Yeah, but I, I think in fairness, I mean, these are important questions and I think in fairness to the people who are asking them, we ought to, we ought to defer this to the December meeting, which will be the first Wednesday in December. Yeah.
What's the date? Someone, anyone?
The date, the seventh?
Seven?
November date?
Could I get a motion to recess case zero-three twenty-two?
It's so moved.
And a second?
Number seven, the second.
Second, all right, aye.
I, we, we won't hold that against anyone. So we've had a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've recessed the case to December seventh, our regular December meeting. And now we'll proceed with the cases that we have before us, which would be case zero-one, twenty twenty-two, seventy-eight Lilac Street. The owner wishes to, this is an R M medium-density residential district, the owner wishes to develop an in-home salon. The activity requires a special exception for a major home occupation under Article twenty-eight, five, thirty? Let's see. Twenty-eight Becky Lane, we have already dealt with. Yes, ma'am?
Hi.
You swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
I, I do.
May we have your name for the record, please?
Heather Byron.
Ms. Byron, fill us in on the criteria for a special exception. We have read your application, but if there's anything you'd like to touch on as a high point, we'd love to hear from you.
Well, I do have two of my neighbors here to say that they're okay with it.
That's fine.
It is a in-home salon. It's only a single chair. It will not have any employees. I have four small children, so trying to go back to work has been very difficult. So this has seemed to be kind of possibly an opportunity to make some money while still being able to be with my children.
I understand. It's a one-chair salon?
Yes.
Hours of operation approximately?
I'm going to do by appointment only, so.
So it's when you have customers?
I'm sorry?
It's when you have customers?
Yeah, literally, just when people are available and we can coordinate.
Okay, one at a time?
Yeah, just one at a time.
Okay.
It looks like you're not expecting more than one or two a day?
Yeah, definitely not.
And do, you live there?
I do.
Okay. Is there a picture of the? I thought there was a floor plan of the house.
There is.
There is.
Not in this state, but just document.
Oh, here it is. Okay. Any questions from the board? Nothing from Nick?
Nope. It's on right here.
Nothing from Jim?
Uh, nope.
Nope.
Andrew? Thank you very much. Questions or comments from code enforcement?
It's only a major home occupation because it specifically excludes this use from a minor, so it's not the, the intensity of the use, it's the fact that it's a salon.
Would anyone like to testify in favor? Please come forward. You sat here all evening. Darn it, you're going to get a chance to talk. Swear to tell the truth and nothing but?
Yes, sir.
May we have your name, please?
Matt Bacon.
What would you like us to know, Mr. Bacon?
Um, as a person involved in real estate, I believe that, of course, you have to balance the private property rights with the public interest. I think private property rights are very important and I don't think that this is contrary to the public interest because I feel personally that home-based occupations, especially those are in the aesthetic nature, tend to be very well-maintained because they want to put a nice, clean image out. I've seen her out painting, doing a lot of things on the property, maintaining it well. And I think that this will be a use that is extremely consistent with the ordinance that was written both in spirit and in application. And as the directive butter, sharing open yard space, I'm in favor of it, so.
Any questions?
Yes, how you spell your last name?
B A C O N.
Thank you.
Just like the breakfast?
Yep.
Okay.
And the actor.
And the actor. And the guy who wasn't really Shakespeare. Thank you very much. We've already checked in with code enforcement?
There's someone else.
Oh, I'm sorry. Dozing off up here.
I've been here for three hours, sir. My name is Nicole Gay and I swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, ma'am. What was it?
Nicole Gay, G A Y.
First name?
Nicole.
Oh, Nicole.
Yes.
Gay.
I live at six Hullbaker's Place. I live directly behind the property, seventy-eight Lilac Street.
And you are, I gather, in favor of the appeal?
I certainly am.
Very good.
Ms., I'm sorry, Mrs. Byron has been wonderful to not only just the immediate surrounding properties, but the whole community that we surround with and helping other mothers come into the age. But not just that, like she's just been overall pretty wonderful. And even in direct support of the families that go to her now without the salon is not going to put any hinder on us. I'm sorry, I'm not as well-spoken as Mr. Matt Bacon. I'm not sure why they asked me to come after him. But just even at this time, I don't see how a one-person salon, a one-chair salon is going to impact traffic on our street. It's certainly not going to impact noise when she's already doing many other things to help the other ladies in our community around her beautiful four children, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Have a great night.
You too. You too.
Thank you.
All right, with that, is there anyone else who wants to be heard? With that, we'll declare the testimony, excuse me, the public testimony portion of the hearing closed. We have a request for a special exception, we've heard testimony that the criteria met for a one-chair, um, duty salon, or, how did she put it? In-home salon. Andrew, what do you think?
Yeah, um, the, you know, it's a special exception, by, so that, by that standard, um, all of the criteria really have to do with, um, impact on, the traffic and utilities, uh, things of that nature, and I don't think, I think historically, we've, we've, we've usually granted single-chair salons with very, by appointment or minimal operating hours, where there's not going to be people waiting, there's not going to be more than one chair, so I, you know, I'm inclined to grant.
Ms. Specter Morgan?
I agree, and Tracy's done a great job of setting forth some findings of fact in her staff memo.
Yeah, I agree, I just, um, the representations from the applicant should be included in the record that it's one-chair, she's not by appointment only, one, one time, one session at a time.
No neon signs, no fireworks on the weekends.
She'd need an apartment for the sign anyways.
Electronic signage?
Electronic signage, no, 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 don't go there. Mr. Wallner?
Oh, yeah, I, I think it meets the requisite findings, A through I, of a special exception.
Very good. Would anyone care to make a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second, based on the findings of fact set forth in the staff memo? With the conditions, that it be a one-chair salon, one customer at a time, owner operated.
Yes. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? I hear no one, the vote is unanimous, the special exception is granted, your evening was not wasted. The next case is zero two, twenty twenty-two, one thirty-one School Street, R S Single Family Residential District, Clifford W. Cars. The owner wishes to construct a second story on a non-conforming garage. This activity would require a variance to Article twenty-eight, four, one, D, side yard to encroach five feet into the side yard, with an expansion of floor area to allow for a second-story great room on the existing footprint of a single-family dwelling. Sir, you swear to tell the truth? May we have your name for the record, please?
Yes, I'm Clifford Cars, I'm the owner at one thirty-one School Street.
Would you fill us in on your reasons why you feel a variance is appropriate here?
Yes, um, the photo that is at least in front of me, and I think maybe all of you have, uh, shows the overhead view of the property, as well as the adjacent. You can see that the area that I'm looking to expand is within the existing footprint that's already there. There's a small room above the garage that's twelve by sixteen approximately, and that size is not particularly useful or usable. The full footprint of the garage is roughly twenty-two by twenty-two, so I'm looking to go to that full footprint of the existing garage just above it. The, it's a very small home to begin with, and doing the renovation will make it much more appealing, certainly will increase its value, as well as generally the neighborhood. A block either side of me, you could probably easily fit my entire home into those homes. So, any improvement to my house is, is going to be beneficial there as well. I ultimately am hoping to, you know, I'm planning to move back there with my wife and my adult stepson, um, who has some care needs, and the space is so small, to have three adults, uh, it's just very limiting. There's really no other place to go with it, the narrow, with the lot, it's, I think it was built in nineteen-ten, and it's sixty-six by-
One thirty-seven-ish?
Yes, thank you.
You're behind the high school?
Yeah, yeah, directly on, uh, behind the high school, just on the upside of the little stream that goes under.
Right.
So, the, the driveway is on essentially the one property line on, on the west side, and to move the garage or to, to try to build a room that was farther towards the end of the driveway would be cost-re prohibitive, because it would require new foundation, new driveway, et cetera, and probably would still require a separate variance. Spoken with the neighbors, the neighbor on the, uh, uh, the non-conforming side offered to be here, I told her not to be, and given the hour, I'm glad I told her that, uh, but I have an email from her that supports doing the, the change as well.
Did that make its way into our record, or?
The email? No, I'm sure it did.
Okay.
Oh, you just have it?
Yeah, yeah, I told, yeah, I, I told her no, and I, you know.
But you're representing that she's in support of it?
Yes, yes, absolutely, yeah, Barbara Leahy.
Uh, questions from the board?
So, it's just this ten feet to the, it's the ten, what you have here is the ten feet, that's the encroachment?
Yeah, which, yeah, which already exists, so I'm not-
You're just bumping out by a few more feet?
Yeah, it's going to-
It's going up?
It's going up, he's not going along.
He's not going out at all?
It's the same footprint.
Yeah, it's just going to be the full second floor of, yeah, on top of the garage, basically, that will be there.
There'll be more floor area on the second floor?
Oh, I see, oh, I see.
There's a little penthouse up there now.
I don't know if I can call it, I have a big photo if it's useful to see, I don't-
You were, you're not adding plumbing or anything?
No, it's just going to be a big room.
Yeah, there's a photo here.
Is there? Oh, yeah, yeah, it's also very ugly right now.
The, the, the little grave business there is what's there now, right?
Correct.
That white, is that the house next door?
Yeah, that's Barbara's house, yep.
So, I imagine, was the house was built, and then the garage was added on, and then the room above the garage was added on after that?
You know, I, I don't know, I bought it from an estate back in two thousand and three, I think, and because it was from an estate, I couldn't get any information from the deceased estate. It, it, it's hard to tell, because the foundation looks continuous on the backside, so I don't really know.
So, so you don't know, and I'm starting to be, but if the, um, um, the current encroachment was there when you bought the house, we don't know if it would be D C accorded, and so the zoning board granted at some point, but, I mean, really indifferent to that, but-
No, I, I, I don't know that for certain, but, yeah, it looks like a continuous foundation from whenever they built the thing.
Other questions from the board? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The record will show that there was no one here to speak either in favor or against, any comments from code enforcement?
Not on this one, no.
No comments from code enforcement, with that, we'll declare the public testimony portion of the hearing closed, we have a request for a variance to build a second floor, or expand a second floor on a section of a building that is already in violation of the side yard setbacks, and has been since nineteen oh nine?
It's listed in nineteen-ten, I don't know if that's accurate or not.
Nineteen-ten, there was no zoning in nineteen-ten, I'm sure, but, why don't we start with Jim, because he never gets to go first?
How many cases have we do tonight?
I don't know.
First time to them, yeah, so I'm inclined to support this, I think the, um, uh, the fact that it's on the, it's going up, it's on the current footprint, doesn't cause any undue, undue impacts, the fact that the neighbors are supportive is important in this, this neighborhood, given the density of it, and I think on the whole, will improve the, um, value of the property and the surrounding residences.
Nick?
Yeah, particularly where it doesn't increase the footprint, uh, going up is okay.
I agree.
Agree.
I agree as well. Would anyone care to make a motion?
I move that we approve the requested variance to add a second story on the non-conforming garage, because it will not be contrary to the spirit of the ordinance, or the purpose of the ordinance, because it will not alter the essential character of the neighborhood, it will not diminish surrounding property values, given that the encroachment is already there, there's no benefit to the public from denying it, and given the existing location of the house on the lot, there is an unnecessary hardship.
Is there a second? A second? Oh, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The vote is unanimous, the variance is granted.
And move to approve last month's minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Abstain.
I was trying to-
Good night.
I'll vote yes.
I vote yes, I, I was here and I read them. That's it, ladies and gentlemen, I believe we've done all we can do tonight, and probably more than that.